Hi, everybody, and welcome to the Georgetown Planning Board Meeting of April 24, 2013. Being after 7:00 PM, it's now 7:06. In attendance tonight, we have Tilly Evangelista, Chris Rich, Bob Watts, myself. I'm Harry Lockatilia. This is Howard Snyder, our Town Planner. Welcome, and the meeting will begin.
And it's called to honor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rich.
We accept the minutes of April 10, 2013, subject to any changes my colleagues may have.
Mr. Rich makes a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Of April 10. With corrections?
Subject to any corrections.
Subject to corrections. And that was seconded by you, Bob? Seconded by Bob. Comments?
No, they're very good.
Any corrections you need to make?
Howard, you got the corrections from the email, right?
Correct.
I'll go with it. Chris, you do with it?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes of April 10, 2013. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to zero. Howard, we're going to skip over the correspondence right now?
Mr. Chairman.
If that's all right with you, we're going to move right to vouchers. And I'll accept the motion to pay the vouchers.
Seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Seven hundred and eighty dollars and zero cents. Chris makes that motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Tilly seconds. Discussion pretty cut and dry. Right? Independent review for, I believe it's...
Six thirty no way.
Eight dollar bills and one for the junior. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to zero. Do you have a sheet?
Do you want to run through Old Business real quick?
Yeah, well, let's see.
What do you want, Jewett Street paying up?
That's Jewett Street. Here we go. A and R for Jewett Street. We're going to A and R for Jewett Street under Old Business. Howard, do you want to give us an update?
The applicant has given us an extension of time, a Form H, if so required. I recommend that you sign that because he will not be here to submit a MyR for signature of the board.
Okay, do we have that?
Yes.
Okay. Accept the motion to... When was that extended to?
June 30.
Request Form H extension. June 30? God bless you. June 30?
June 30, correct.
Have a motion for that?
So moved.
Chris moves to extend the time to June 30, 2013. Is this a second?
My second.
Bob, seconds? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to zero. Three signatures there, though. Do we have to send it? So we got it.
If there's any other comments or questions regarding the material that was in your packet regarding the A and R?
Mm-hmm. And we got the information from Town Council?
Right.
What they recommended, basically recommended. If you guys didn't get that, did you get that email?
It was in the PDF as well.
It was in the PDF.
I saw that. Town Council recommended, and did I also see something that... Mr. Morehouse was... It was a... He would do it, but if... It was confusing.
I'll do it, but I won't do it. That was Howard's email. What Town Council said was basically...
Oh, yeah. I understood exactly what Town Council said.
It needs to be called private. If that becomes a private way? It is. Does it have to be cleared? It's private.
What do you mean by cleared?
It's private. It's a way in which the public has the right of access and he goes...
Could you please speak up so we can hear what's going on at the meeting?
Oh, very sorry, sir. We'll try to... Sure. We're discussing what's called a Form A, an A and R Form A for 41 Jewett Street. The Morehouses want to subdivide their land into two parcels, and, well, that's the discussion of this. And basically, we've been looking for some advice from Town Council because it remained... The frontage is actually, at this point, on a section of land that was, by mechanism of law, abandoned by the town when the county commissioners laid out Jewett Street in a different direction, in a different location. So, by way of explanation.
End.
I'm sorry?
He wants to hear the rest.
Well, it's an interesting situation that we're in because it's a Jewett Street address at that point, but the old Jewett Street, which went before 95 was there, across 95, that's no longer Jewett Street, and we were betwixt and between, well, what happens to the people who own property that fronted on Old Jewett Street, and all of a sudden they moved it. The old Jewett Street is no longer recognized as a public way. It's now a private way.
Is the same thing at Penny Street and Searle Street when they redid Penny Street?
Possibly, sir. Very possibly. It's very, very similar to what probably, most likely, happened to what you know, may know as Rogers Way and may know as Hazen Court. But this is another issue for another time, and thank you to hold... Reserve your comments, please, for now, if you would. Back to what the applicant for this process has to do. The applicant needs to change the MyR. He needs to change that. Town Council's asked us to make... Ensure that what is now being represented on that plan as a public way is no longer represented that way.
I understand that.
That's the one change that needs to be made on that plan. The other thing that we need to consider is what we consider for any A and R.
Absolutely.
Is the way adequate?
Adequate.
And this board should look at that right now because if that way is not adequate, this doesn't move forward, and we can't endorse. And there's no point in spending money changing a plan that we can't endorse. Has everybody been there?
Yeah, but the response, the final note came from Mr. Morehouse that said there was an alternative that the Town Council had suggested he do if, in fact, he gets the CR at Town Meeting Vote. So he may not need the A and R from us if he follows that alternative.
I think you may have misinterpreted that. He'll need... He's requesting an A and R, and the board is able to endorse that A and R under two premises.
Right. I understand that.
The first was, which was just discussed, where you'd consider the adequacy of the way. The second is if he puts a note on the new lot that will be created, which is Lot 2, saying it's part of the conservation restriction because it'll be joined with the property next to it, which is his. Now, if the conservation restriction passes at Town Meeting, it's fine.
Yeah.
If it doesn't pass, he's going to be coming back with an A and R, and you'll need to be considering the adequacy of the way. So I suggest you consider the adequacy first.
Besides that, it makes sense. He doesn't have to change the plan at all if this board doesn't think that that's adequate. If the way is adequate in the opinion of the board, then you make them spend money. Why make them spend money if we're just going to deny it anyway? Not deny it, but refuse to endorse it?
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense. Bob, have you had a chance to go look at that road?
I saw the pictures, and, I mean, I'm familiar with it.
Are you comfortable, in your opinion, that the way is adequate?
And we're calling it Old Jewett Road.
Just so that we can identify.
But we don't... That's not official.
For identification purposes, that...
If it's a private way.
That private way, that we're all referencing.
Well, my comment, if I may, and you were with me when we drove over there, in its present condition, it's anything but adequate because you can't travel down it.
I wonder if...
What constitutes adequate? You can travel down it, but you can't travel the whole length of it because of the culvert, but...
There's nothing to do with the culvert, Howard. There was a pile of dirt, whatever, about six feet high. In defense of that, I drove down it today. I drove all the way down. I went right in, near the entrance, near the driveway of the house, and I forgot what the name of the lot is, but the lot that's being subdivided?
Lot 1 has the existing home on it. Lot 2 is the newly created.
I drove in the entrance that way, put that driveway there, kept on going, slowed down because where the culvert is, it gets...
Can't pass.
Very narrow. No, no, you can pass. I drove right over it with a passenger vehicle. Watch out for the big rock at the end because you want to go around it, but I question whether it is as adequate or less adequate as...
Heather Road.
Heather Road?
Which was the most recent A and R that the board would be familiar with.
Which, by the way, dead ends. It's not a through road. There's no requirement that it be a through road. The only requirement is it's adequate access for a minimum of 50 feet to the newly created lot. Is it 50 feet? It seemed as though it had adequate access to me. That's just opinion.
You know, the flip side of that coin is at one time it was adequate.
Absolutely.
If they didn't move Jewett Street, it would still be adequate, no matter what.
Good point.
But it hasn't been maintained.
No, and there's a lot of what I would see as growth, trees this big.
You know what? Is it the intended uses?
I'm sorry?
You know what the intended use is?
My understanding is the intended... I wish he was here. I'm not going to...
The intended use is not to create a buildable lot. The intended use is to donate for the conservation, to go with the rest of the farm.
Right, right.
Wait a minute. Timeout. I don't think the conservation restriction has anything to do with it.
By all means, that part of that second lot is... Was part of what was considered the...
Lot louder.
That number for the conservation restriction.
But that lot is still going to be used, conservation restriction or not, in what it's being used for now.
Agricultural.
One is a house lot.
One's going to be a house lot.
And then one next to it will be part of the restriction for the farm.
Right.
That's the intent at this point.
But the conservation restriction doesn't affect what's presently going on on that property today.
There is no conservation restriction today.
If it were in effect?
Right.
The conservation restriction would not affect anything that's being done on that lot today.
I have to disagree. It is intended to be part of the conservation restriction. The conservation restriction was valued inclusive of that lot. Can we see? Is the conservation restriction handy that we can review it? You know what? We certainly can look into it, but I'll be honest with you. With respect to A and R, I don't see why it's even relevant.
Well, it was brought up. I was just going to say, this is being done.
Because the Town Council gave them an alternative about it.
That would be in the alternative that we did not consider it adequate way. But I don't know if we do or we don't consider it an adequate way. If we consider it an adequate way, it's irrelevant.
How about a sidewalk?
Great idea. Motion for a sidewalk?
So moved.
Chris moves.
Stop that discussion, but quick.
Sidewalk? When is this sidewalk?
They're anxious. They don't care about it.
When is the sidewalk?
You're welcome.
Tomorrow morning at 4:00? You bringing the flashlight in the coffee?
What day is this going to be?
Before Monday.
I don't know. It's not my motion. Chris makes the motion.
What do you guys want? Before Monday? Anytime before Monday.
Not 7:00 in the morning.
Okay, 6:30? What's better, Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday, what would that be, 27th?
7th.
27th?
8 o'clock Saturday morning.
2013 at 8:00 AM. And is there a second for that?
Second.
Now, Tilly, be it. Tilly seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to zero. Sidewalk for A and R Jewett Street. 8:00 AM, 27th. Okay, good.
Can you post that? Because hopefully, there'll be a majority of the board.
Good enough. That's done. Honeydew? Want to do Honeydew?
Honeydew won't take long. Honeydew, you've... There's been an updated plan submitted. You received the PDF.
Do we have high copies?
Yeah, I could read it on the computer.
You want full-size plans? I can easily... But he won't be back for a few weeks, so I can have it in the next packet. It basically shows everything that was discussed at the last meeting, the striping, improvements, the landscape area. Peter Durkey has looked into the storm drains. You received the correspondence on that. The way I understand the storm drains, the one on the streets are all cleaned by the town. The one that's on the site connects to it because when they redid East Main Street, it was an odd elevation that needed to be maintained. So that collects the parking lot, and then it connects into the town.
Truncated.
Right.
Except the catchphrase.
So we've encouraged... The building inspector and I have encouraged that the owner of 103 and 105 get an overall vision together and come in before the planning board so we can understand the incremental steps that are being taken, what the end result they hope to be, at least to guide.
I went down and spoke to... Just so my colleagues know, I went down and spoke to Dana and asked him what his plans were, and he's got some really nice plans for that property to dress it up. That green wall that we were concerned about, he asked if he could put it in.
All right.
How do we incorporate those two lots? Right now, one's... What is it? 105 is a separate, it's distinct lot from 103. How do we bifurcate? How do we join those under a single site plan? Is it possible? Is there a legal methodology for that?
Well, yeah, it would be... I mean, picture a subdivision. You've got all different lots that are encompassed in one.
Right, but at this point, we've opened a hearing for a site plan approval of 103... Of 105, excuse me. Now, that is in progress.
But the best way to be...
If one comes in now for 103, it may work in a parallel course, but they are never joined, and in the end, we end up with the same problem that historically we seem to be seeing from all of the various ZBA decisions. Talking about one lot and the other. In reality, it's one lot.
Well, why can't we... Maybe we should ask Town Council if we can do one site plan, two lots, one project, one site plan.
I don't think we need to ask the council.
What if we just get that line?
What you could do is you could have him come in and offer a site plan with...
That incorporates the two lots.
That shows the improvements he wants to do on the two lots because it's under the common ownership.
Right.
And he can easily get approval to do improvements on another lot.
Gee, is it common ownership because doesn't the trust... Isn't it legally... Legal title rests in the trust, and then I think it rests in Dana's family on one side.
I thought they were both owned by...
We'd need permission from both of them.
I asked him if he would be kind enough to get the proof of ownership, and he said, "No problem."
It will streamline his efforts and review by the board.
Terribly agreeable. He's going to put up a barrier, a green barrier, that will block the septic system. It'll also block the noise that those people were worried about, if any trucks.
Why don't we wait until we see what it is on the plan?
And with that, I have the three ZBA decisions.
May, isn't it?
It's in May.
May 7th or 8th?
I'll hand out copies of the three zoning board decisions with the corresponding exhibits that go along.
I saw that.
That's what we need.
You'll have Asbills. What I gather is the work was done. The concern was some of the trees were not installed, but the way I understand it is they were installed, but they died off, so...
We're concerned with seeing what the ZBA did ask for so that we're not somehow creating a new conflict with that because those decisions still stand. So, that's in the 7th. Is the owner going to be here? That would really make things a lot easier.
I'll contact and encourage him. Because he needs to be representing the applicant who's just going to be leasing on this property.
Right, and this is going to greatly affect the property. There's just too many safety concerns because that's a huge parking lot.
And I think he'll keep... I mentioned the parking issue, and his comment was they have the use of the spaces, not exclusive use.
Okay. All right.
Well, let's wait till we hear it from them.
Well, that sounds good, though. He's willing to cooperate and do what he can to fix it up.
We're going to skip... Not skip over. We're going to delay the planning office points, if that's all right with everybody.
It sure is.
Let's go to the public hearing.
Yeah, and the public hearing was 7:07, and I was purposely delaying, folks. My apologies. I've been trying to delay long enough. Let Tim Howard arrive, but it's 25 minutes into the meeting. That appears as though it may or may not happen.
Why don't you explain to them why we do that? Because of the majority and supermajority.
Oh, yes, we do that for a majority, supermajority as far as votes, but the most important reason that we do it in this because this is a special permit. The most important thing is you need four out of five votes for a special permit for an OSRD, and there's something referred to as the Mullin case wherein disgruntled butters appealed a decision of a board on the basis of the fact that one or more of the members of the board were not present at each and every continuance of the hearing, and they did not get information. But yet, at the last hearing, continuance of the hearing, they voted, and that essentially made no good their vote because they didn't have all the information. And the court upheld that that was a wrong... A bad ruling. They shouldn't have been allowed to vote, and what we want to do is we always want to try to make sure that the whole board is sitting here so that in three, four, six months, whenever it is that this finally gets resolved, that this board can vote and that it's a good vote for the applicant and for all the butters. My understanding is you've all... If you have an intent to give a comment tonight, I would hope you would raise your hand, and you would state your name. You state your address for the record. I would also hope that you signed in on the sheets that are in the back room. Other than that, try to direct your comments to me, and I'll forward it to the applicants and the applicant's representatives. And hold your questions till the end when I ask for public comment, please, because it's going to be kind of a confusing series of events here tonight. What you're going to see is the opening of what's called an open space residential design subdivision. It's only been used a few times in Georgetown. It's a great idea because the bylaw essentially protects 60% of the lot as natural open space, and it's generally a good idea. Ultimately, at the same time, the applicants are allowed to submit what's referred to as a preliminary plan. This is a standard subdivision, just very much like a definitive subdivision under our rules and regulations. That preliminary subdivision plan is allowed to be submitted and reviewed under the auspices of the OSRD permit. And then, at one point, what happens is the board reviews the both of them, goes back to the applicant, and says which of the two plans it prefers. Ultimately, of course, this is still America. The owners of the land have a right to choose the destiny of their own making, and of course, they can choose if they wish to go OSRD or if they wish to go preliminary plan, standard subdivision. And each has their benefits, and we'll hear that now. Without any further ado, in accordance with the provisions of Article 7 in the Town of Georgetown Zoning Code, Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 24 at 7:00 PM in the third floor meeting room at Georgetown Memorial Hall. This is to consider Artisan Development LLC's special permit application for open space residential development regarding a proposed residential development of properties at 44 Searle Street, 18 Lisa Lane, and a property known as Rear Lisa Lane in Georgetown, Massachusetts. This is located in the residential B-zone district and is described on the Tax Assessor's map as Map 16, Lot 17, Map 16, Lot 80, and Map 16, Lot 02. A full typo there. We're missing Map 16 there. At any rate, copy the allow. And this is the opening of the hearing. This is the OSRD opening. And I believe we have a representative here? And would you state your name for the record?
Certainly. It's Jill Elstrom, Man. And here we have Artisan Development.
Please, take a seat.
Okay, sure.
Make yourself comfortable. I think we're going to be here for a little while.
As far as the plans go, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Chairman...
We'll sync on the screen as well as there, and the microphone's right there.
Wonderful. Thank you. So this evening, we're here tonight to present two plans to you. One would be the OSRD plan in compliance with Section 165. As well, we have presented to the board a preliminary subdivision plan under your standard rules and regulations. It would not be a cluster subdivision, but rather a normal, if you will, standard subdivision that comply completely with all of the requisites in the zoning bylaw for individual lots in the R1B district. And as you can see, the lot and the... If you will, the plan that is presently up is the actual preliminary plan. Mr. Cotelia, I don't know. Do you want me to go through some detail?
This is the OSRD yield plan?
Yes, which is basically the same thing as the preliminary plan, which is why I want to ask you. Do you want me to explain the process for the OSRD so that the people who are in the audience who are here understand it? Is that okay?
The first thing I'd like to do is make a note that before we've had the opportunity to take any information at all, Tim Howard arrives.
Wonderful.
At 32:00. Tim arrives.
Welcome.
Excellent. And Tim understands that we're just now opening the public hearing for the OSRD for Lisa Lane. And I would like to ask, Howard, can you... Could you do me a favor and could you flip that around? Because I like north generally facing north.
It also doesn't show the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted by the...
Sir, sir, this isn't going to be chaotic. We're not in a barroom here. This is a meeting. Hold your comments till later, please. Thank you. You got to flip it around. Thank you very much, Howard.
Is that the way you wanted it or the other? That's good? I didn't know if you wanted the other way.
That... Yeah, here's Lisa Lane.
Yep. Okay. Howard, is it possible to make it a little larger for them?
There you go.
That's good.
There we go. That looks good.
I don't know. Oh, no. There you go.
Well, I like north. It's facing north, more northern now.
According to the compass rose, it's west.
Searle. We got to flip it. I don't know if you can do anything other than 90 degree flips.
That's good.
But at any rate, it's a little bit...
I also have some aerials if that would help in the discussion, so...
One thing I would like to do, Jill, I'd like to just make sure that we're separating this all out. Jill, uh, I'd like to just make sure that we're separating this all out, we are bifurcating it, but it's a little bit complicated.
It is.
We'll, we'll start with...
The OSRD?
We'll start with OSRD, then we can go to the yield plan, then we'll deal with preliminary, if that's alright.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to have... Sorry?
This map here, if you move that back, we can't see all of the map on the wall.
Sure, we'll get that out anyway, absolutely, absolutely. Um, what we'll, what we'll try to do is go through those three plans, and try to, try to listen, folks, because they are essentially two different sets of concepts. And, um, we'd like to hear your comments, everyone in this room that wants to speak will be heard tonight, don't worry. You will be heard, your comments will be taken, if you've sent comments by email or any other methodology, they will be heard, they will be in the record. Uh, I just wanna say that there's a lot of information here tonight, we'd like to get as much as we can out in the open for you to hear it as well as for us, and then we'll give you the chance to, to comment.
So I think maybe then, we're gonna start with the OSRD, maybe it would be best if we actually start with the OSRD plan, and then I can back into, um, how you have to prove out with the, um, concept plan. So basically, under an OSRD, um, what it does is it tries to encourage a cluster development, so the concept of OSRD is to open space residential development. So the point, as Mr. Cotelia has indicated at the beginning of the meeting, is to create large areas of open space and to concentrate development. I recognize that that's not cohesive or maybe, um, consonant with the neighboring properties, because those have always been developed under a traditional method, but this is what the OSRD represents. So what you must do is you must dedicate at least sixty percent of the area, the mass, that you're proposing to develop, and you must dedicate that as open space. When you do that, you actually, you've spoken earlier about conservation restrictions, what you do do is impose a conservation restriction on that area that is deemed to be open space. What a conservation restriction is, is not conservation land, as, you know, some people have complaints, when realtors tell them it's conservation land, 'cause it can always be changed. When a conservation restriction is imposed, and that is actually confirmed by the EOA, it becomes a perpetual restriction that can neither be waived by the town, nor the owner, nor butters, without an active legislature, so once you do that, it's, it's set. Um, so that's why they do an open space, so it really is conservation land for a great period of time.
There's also the other option, it, it can be, it can be a conservation given to an outside agency, or it can be a donation of land to the town.
It can.
Or it can also be kept by the homeowners association if there is one.
Right, ninety percent of the time, though, the town, and maybe that isn't the prediction of Georgetown, they usually want that, because they wanna make sure that nobody...
They want the tax write-off.
Yeah, no, you know what, it's a tax write-off regardless. Um, but, it, it, not when it's part of an, it, it has a whole bunch of tax requirements, but I won't, I won't bore anybody, but... So, anyway, so this land actually takes sixty percent, what you have to do is you have to match, so you can't have more, um, wetlands in the OS, in the open space than you have in the actual, um, residential development, which is what kinda poses an issue with regard to this particular location, because all the open space resides in the back, so it kinda gives it an odd configuration when you're trying to establish open space. Um, one of the things is, again, is you bring all the development forward, so you're given specific waivers with regard to types of construction, types of dwelling, setbacks, um, frontage, yard, all of that is more, um...
Flexible.
Yes, thank you, flexible development. So what they do is they say to you, look, you can have more density, you can provide more living space, as long as you're giving the town these extra, this extra land, so what you have is you have this thing called density permissibility. So you, you give the town more open space, they give you more, um, units, if you will. You give the town added, um, affordable units, they give you more units to develop. So what they're trying to do is incent the people who develop land to bring in more units. So what we show you is the proposed development, what we have proposed is actually a condominium development, because when you try to propose a, um, open space residential district, it's very difficult, because of Title V requirements, to be able to get in septic systems, because you need so much square footage, you gotta have everything away from a district, you can't have it too far away from a boundary line, you can't have it on somebody else's property, so what ends up being the best-case scenario when you're developing these, and I've done a few of them, where you have to actually have one dedicated septic system for the whole unit. And because of Title V requirements, that means you have to have a condominium, so all commonly-owned multifamilies, that's what this is. You don't have to, you know what I mean, commonly-owned condominium structure. I mean, I'm, I'm, I know I'm going into a lot of detail, but I figure maybe the people behind me want to know that.
Great idea.
Okay.
Could I, could I just interrupt you?
Please do.
One of the first things you have to do, this, this is the end result of the four-step process.
Yes, and then we're gonna go back to the yield, yep.
Now, if we could go back to, uh, the prelim, the, not the preliminary plan, but the very beginning...
Concept.
The, the concept plan, thank you.
Okay, so the way in which, the way in which you begin, and you figure out how you get a certain number, is you have to prove to the planning board, what is my yield, what can I do by right? When I look at this subdivision, how can I construct a standard residential subdivision, and how many homes may I get in there? And the criteria are, you have to be able to, um, construct a roadway that is compliant with the subdivision rules and regulations for infrastructure, you need to be able to provide sufficient infrastructure, i.e. stormwater retention systems, you need to be able to install independent septic systems for each of the lots. So what you do is you have your engineer prepare a concept plan, which is what is, what you see now, so that...
What I'm seeing is a, is a, is a, a yield plan.
A ye, I'm sorry, I call concept yield, yes.
The concept plan has the, and the OSRD is, is, is pretty relegated to the, the methodology under which you develop your yield plan, your, your, um, concept plan. Uh, it starts by identifying what's referred to as the primary conservation areas.
Yep, yes.
Could you just sort of point those out, I don't know if you're gonna need your screen, or...
Do you have a pointer?
Do we have a pointer?
Do you have an, uh, I, I didn't know you were gonna use, so I didn't bring a pointer. We're gonna have to show on this plan?
I'm gonna use this, then.
Sorry.
Yeah, that would help.
So...
This thing wants to stand behind us.
So basically, we have to identify all the conservation areas, which are wetland areas, um, riverfront areas, um, and certain other things, like...
Steep slopes.
Yes, you have to, so...
Trails, things such as that. I'm sorry?
Can we stop for a second?
Sure. Point of...
Just for the record...
Please.
So we're in compliance with all the open meeting laws, 'cause God knows... I said, we're stopping just for the record, so we're complying with all the open meeting laws. Exhibit one is the OR, OSRD concept plan dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Exhibit two will be the OSRD yield plan, and you have those with you, so the, the big ones...
We've submitted them?
I'll mark the, Howard, I'm gonna mark these for our purposes.
Purposes, yeah.
Great.
Do you want me to mark these for you, or are you comfortable?
We'll carry it through.
Okay, Richie?
So...
You have to introduce yourself.
Yes, Rich Williams with Williamson Sprages, I'm a civil engineer for the project. There are, um, throughout, I, I'll call it the back of the site, but the, the parts of the site that are away from...
Oh, you're upside down again.
Can he go to the front of the class, so everybody can see him?
I can go to the front, but...
Why don't, why don't you move to the side of the class, so you can see him, that's, that's the biggest place you're gonna be able to see it. And we could probably, if you tap on that window, and you turn that, turn that a little bit more this way.
You can stand in the corner.
And I think what you're gonna have is, the, the camera will be able to show it, you should be able to see it on that monitor off to your, off to your right, not behind you, but off to your right.
So, um, this is Lisa Lane, this is bussing Wilkins and Searl, just to get you oriented.
So I usually see it on a map, thank you.
And, um, there are primary conservation areas that are on the site. Uh, specifically, there are wetlands that are around, and I call it the back, but it's away from Lisa Lane. Uh, there, and there are also wetlands up, um, adjacent to the property coming off of Searl.
That's the Searl Street property?
This is the Searl Street property, so there is a wetland system here, um, and that continues, but we only get it, um, on, adjacent to our property. Uh, and then there's a wetland system here, and then this wetland system wraps around the back of the property, and there's also a wetland here, there is some upland on the other side of those wetlands, here and here, but these are the, uh, the wetland areas that are on the site. And there really aren't any, there's no view, just there's, there are some steep slopes, there's some rocky areas that are down in this area, as you go out towards the, um, towards the power lines, there's power lines that run, um, out here.
Is there any riverfront there, is there a stream that runs through there?
That's, that's an intermittent stream.
That's an intermittent stream?
Correct.
And that, that's been determined by the ConCom?
It hasn't, but it's, it is, um, on the map, it's intermittent, the watershed doesn't support it, so...
Are, are these confirmed wetland lines?
They are not.
They're not confirmed?
No, no, no.
Okay. Are you, are you applying before the ConCom?
We're going to, yes.
You're going for an A-RAT or something, an IDA, something like that, great, good, we'll need to have that.
ConCom couldn't verify these until after April fifteenth.
That's correct, I mean, we, we flagged them back in, uh, late October, early November, and, um, are just now able to get into that process.
Okay. Where, where some of them may or may not affect the actual yield, we, we may have a little trouble determining yield tonight.
Right.
So, but please, continue.
An upland space, open space, I mean, you're just throwing it out there, how many, how many acres is upland space? That's another issue with the OSRD, you just can't give us the wetlands for a space, open space.
Right, right, the ratio, the ratio, the ratio of...
We will, we're gonna go through the whole thing.
That's correct, and it's not, these areas aren't like, it's not like it's a flat meadow, it's a pretty clear line, and, um, we're not anticipating that there's gonna be, you know, there might be some flag changes, but we're not anticipating that it's gonna be something that changes our plan.
Right.
Well, we wanna know how much is the yield plan in open space?
Well, we gave it to you, it's...
Where is that?
It's in the applications on the plan, I can take you through it, but it's on the first sheet, it's on the concept plan, actually.
Well, let's, let's...
And this is still the four-step process?
Let, let's keep moving through the four-step, shall we? Uh, local wetlands, buffer zones, riverfronts, areas of critical concern, outstanding resource waters, rare species happens, vernal pools?
No vernal pools.
No vernal pools? Okay, and that's, that, and that's something that has to be determined by the ConCom when you do your, when your, um... Flood hazard areas and floodplains?
Yes, there is flood plain.
I don't see that there, I'm sorry.
Is, is that still the first step?
Oh, that's all, that's the primary conservation area.
That's still primary conservation area.
We haven't even gotten to the secondary.
Okay.
Yeah, the flood, the flood plain, uh, contains the wetland, there's a, uh, town flood plain, uh, I believe it's elevation eighty-seven, and there is a Zone A, um...
I've got a copy of that.
And we've, we've plugged that on the, uh, on the plan.
So the, the blue area is going to be, uh, your water resource district, and then it's a little bit hard to see, but you can see a little bit right here, that's the FEMA area right there.
The red's the FEMA?
The FEMA is where, where the, the cursor is right now, that, that purple line right there.
And what, what is the blue, Howard?
The blue's the water resource district.
Water resource district, that's a permit from the ZBA if you want to...
Can you point that out to me, where you put this, I have the applications down, where is it that says open space?
It's on the, it's on the plan sheet.
It's on the plan sheet, actually.
It's on the plan sheet.
Yeah.
We, we'll go through it with you.
Okay.
You want me?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's the end result, let's...
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got an extra, um, thirty thousand square feet of provided upland area, and, uh, regarding open space, we've got an extra hundred and thirty thousand square feet, um...
Above the requirement.
And that, above the requirement of open space, and that's because you can't, you can't provide, uh, in the open space, a ratio, um, of greater wetlands than upland, so you have to give more than sixty percent to make, to make the number work.
If you have a wet area, if you have a wet park, yeah.
If there is any wetland on the property, unless you just, you plan on putting wetland in the development area.
Tough to do sometimes.
Which, which we could do, but it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see it broken down, and I'd have to get it boards, how you figured it out.
I think it's, I think it's on there, and we'll, we'll see that, but look, one of the things we really wanna do...
Well, you kinda skimmed over the area by the road there, like, all of a sudden, the water stops there?
Yes.
Yeah, what was your explanation for that?
No, I just said, it continues, but it's off our property.
It doesn't go where the, where you have the road, is that what you're telling me?
Mm-hmm.
It does.
It just stops, okay.
Well, this stops, but it goes this way.
It goes that way, out.
It continues this way.
It doesn't come in.
Off of the property.
It doesn't come this way.
Off the subject property.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we did provide a detailed account of the open space required and provided, and the percentages, um, in conformance with the bylaw, and, and there are some, um, allowances, there's, there's an extra, like I said, thirty thousand square feet, so it would take a lot of flag moving to eat that up.
I, I'm, um, we changed back here, and I, I'm just a little concerned, because, I mean, I don't have it overlaid on it, but I thought that water resource district, at least it seemed to me that, um, your, your proposed septic treatment system was within it.
No, 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 it's, it's definitely not. This is...
Gee, it really looks, it's, it's very deceptive.
Oh.
It's very deceptive.
I'm sorry, yes, the water resource district, not, not the...
Flood plain.
Not the flood plain.
Right, right, the, the water resource, I, I, and I, I don't even pretend to know...
You're allowed to have septic systems in there.
I didn't think you were allowed to have one over fifteen thousand, but gallons, but anyway, I don't know that rule, that's a ZBA thing. So, again, um, that's something, it, we, we, just something, just a comment, please continue, let's, let's go to the, uh, the other , uh, primary resource areas, uh, let's go to the secondary conservation areas. Um, unprotected elements of the natural landscape such as steep slopes greater than twenty-five percent?
I mean, there are, there are numerous...
I think we need another display up here, if we could.
Steep slopes over twenty-five percent, uh, over here, there are a lot of ledge-out crops.
Okay.
Um, so there are, there are a lot of those areas.
Okay, and you backed out, you backed out of those.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct, except, except that the road, um, definitely goes through some of those areas.
Is there a plan that shows that?
Like an existing conditions, or anything like that?
With the areas greater than twenty-five percent, no.
What's the distance of that road?
The length of the road.
Right.
That's a good question, um, I can scale it out for you. Um, it's about twenty-eight hundred feet.
But it is a continuous road that you're showing there.
Oh, yeah, it's a through road.
It's a through road, so it's by right.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, there are no road, length of road limitations to a, a through road. According to this, uh, need to look at the large open meadows as the secondary conservation areas. Uh, the steep slopes greater than twenty-five percent, mature woodlands with a caliper of twenty inches or greater trees, vernal pool upland habitat, which is a secondary, if there were a vernal pool there. And your, your consultant didn't see anything like that, right?
Right, and, and there are no map vernal pools.
Mm-hmm.
But there are, there is, you know, a lot of the site is wooded, most, mostly wooded, some of it's thin. The areas of the wetlands, they have, there is some open wetland there, um...
And how many acres is it that you're putting the houses?
Fourteen acres.
Over total amount of how many acres?
Forty.
The important thing is that you identify these areas, and you sort of draw a bubble around them, and separate them out, and everything that isn't those areas is considered the developable area. And then, in theory, at that point, you put this plan aside, before you draw your road in, before you put your houses or condos in, you put this plan aside, then you go to your yield plan, and if we go to the yield plan...
Well, Steve was going to explain how they determine...
The yield, exactly, exactly, because, once you determine what your yield is, you have a number of units, number of homes, houses, units, whatever you wanna call them.
Yeah.
And then at that point, once you have that magic number, if you will, then you go back to your developable area, you plug those units in, in some fashion, you then draw the road, and then you draw lot lines.
It, it, quite, quite...
Then you draw the lot line.
Yeah.
By doing that, what you essentially have is, you have a diminished area that you have to develop, that you have to punch road for, you have maybe diminished road width, yes, you have diminished lot sizes, but this board can waive frontage and depth and dimensionality of those lots, that's how you draw it in.
And that's what we did.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Uh, although, you know, that process is a, it's, that four-step's process, every town uses it, it's, it's generic, and there are, I mean, there are no lot lines within a developed area.
One lot.
There is one lot, but there are lot lines around it, and we've placed, um, the units outside the primary conservation areas and kinda shrink wrapped the, the developed area, um, with a lot line that, that divides the open space from the developed area.
Excellent, thank you.
But it, to me, it looks like a cookie cutter setup. The cluster de, design that, and the intent of this bylaw is not only to protect the open space, but to place the houses so that they're in the landscape, so they look natural. You're, you know, it looks like you're gonna strip the, strip the area and plump the houses into a cookie cutter setup. That's not what we have in mind with the OSRD.
And I, I understand, Tilly, I just wanted to add a comment to that, this is still a concept, so...
Yeah, we haven't, certainly haven't...
I understand that, too, but...
Done a, uh, a detailed design of this concept plan, the OSRD plan.
Rick, would you do me a favor, would you just move that, or scooch the, the mic or something there?
And the other thing that I, I, I noticed looking at both, 'cause we had the copies of the preliminary as well, is that not a lot of effort went into preserving the road. That's another advantage for the OSRD, is you limit the size and the distance of the road. It looks like it's comparatively the same-sized road for each development, and you could save a ton of money as a developer by cutting back on the road, and thereby more preservation for the land. And you have it. And you have it, it's kind of looks like...
You mean, the, the, the development costs would be minimized if you use a smaller road with house lots drawn around it?
Sure.
Rick, but also a road that would be narrow.
The plan is just the right-of-way, correct?
Well, it's the right-of-way, but, but we had to provide, um, due to your regulations, a through road. Um, and that's what, that's what's on the plan, and then you also have to provide access to the units that are on there.
Mm-hmm. That's true.
And it is, I mean, it is shorter, for what it's worth.
Rick, can I ask, in, in the process, did you, um, did you or landscape architect, anybody, uh, actually try putting, putting them in as houses as opposed to, um, duplexes and triplexes? What, did, did that not work out as well?
The septic issue.
The septic, which is...
I mean, you could, you could do singles and still have the sewage treatment plant, but you're, you're very limited on the number of, of units that you can have, and, and the development doesn't work.
What, why would you be limited?
Because if you look on, on this, we've got, um, we've got triplexes and duplexes. If you're gonna separate them, every time you separate it, it's another thirty feet, so you eat up basically a unit every time you do it.
What were the sizes of these three-dimensionals, these three units attached? What were the, what's your rounded figure of the dimensions of these buildings?
Showing on the plan is forty by forty boxes, something like that.
Forty by forty.
What, what would happen to that if, um, yeah, my, my understanding is this number is, is inflated, due to the addition of, uh, bonus units for affordable housing?
Correct.
Um, your, your, your yield plan represented something like twenty-seven houses, twenty-eight houses?
Twenty-six, dude.
Twenty-six? Um, and, and that's far more than the twenty-six showing there for the duplexes. There were a good number of units added to that, what was it, like eight or nine units added for bonus, because of affordable housing?
Mm-hmm.
Um, what did it look like without all that additional affordable housing? Would, uh, single-family homes?
It just...
Did it, did that not economically work out, or...
It just doesn't economically work out. People who buy individual, single-family homes don't want to live in condominiums, and that's the kind of hurdle you, you try to get over. It's, it's very odd, it's just, it's the, it's the nature of the area. People who buy single-family homes want single-family homes, they don't want to be a part of an association, and they do not want cooperative living.
I, I think...
With all due respect, it didn't seem to diminish any of the property values over at Little's Hill.
But...
Well, these lots would be about twelve, about, um, twelve to fourteen thousand square feet, which is not anything close to Little's Hill.
The yield number wasn't as great as you anticipated.
What's that?
What if the yield number wasn't as great as you anticipated? If some of those, um, twenty, could you say twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Some of those twenty-six weren't really allowed because they weren't real lots. If that number went down, would you have been able to...
Oh, if it went down, then the number would go down.
Mm-hmm. And your ability to use this configuration of a road may, if that, that configuration of a road may work for individual lots.
Individual homes aren't individual lots.
Individual lots.
Yeah, because you can't...
Can, can have homeowners, so...
No, no, the only, you can't do individual lots is because Title V doesn't allow you to have, uh, one cooperative, um, septic system. We'll never be able to do individual lots under this. You have, because you can't...
They don't own their lots.
You have to own the lot upon which you construct your septic system under Title V, and there's not sufficient area in this, in this location to do that. That's why.
Mm-hmm.
So, you have to have, it has to be a condo, no matter what.
I mean, to get to the Little's Hill type development, you, you would have to cut the number down by sixty percent in the yield.
To get rid of areas and lots.
It's, it's apples and oranges, it's not...
Even with reduced sizes, as far as the lots are concerned.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, you end up with lots that are, based on the open space calculation, you, you, we're stuck with the development area. Right? Because the open space, uh, to get sixty percent open space and not change the ratios, we end up with, um, I think it's twenty-six or twenty-seven acres of open space. So, with the twenty-seven acres of open space, you're, you're left with a develop, developable area, and if you divide it up into lots, um, and using the twenty-six thousand number, I think the lot area was about thirteen or fourteen thousand square feet, so it's, it's a pretty small number.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Little's Hill, I think those lots were forty thousand square feet.
Oh, they're big lots, yeah.
So, you would have to, you would have to cut our yield in, by, it would have to be a third of the number.
I don't see, I don't see it being that much.
No, this is definitely not the case. So, it's apples and oranges.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
But isn't, isn't that a saving right there, is to have a community, rather than individual septics? Isn't that a saving as well?
Not really.
No?
No, these, these sewage treatment plants are very expensive.
So is the septic.
Well, I mean, you're probably talking about, you know, somewhere between seven hundred thousand and a million dollars, and, and those septics wouldn't cost that. So, it's more expensive.
Any board members have any questions about the, um, the, excuse me, the concept plan, how it was derived? Do we want to go on to the yield plan, and look at the yield plan to start to determine yield? Or do we want to go to the preliminary plan?
It's kind of, I find it difficult, I don't know about the rest of you, but if he hasn't been to the Conservation Board, this is very difficult to, to have the lines certified to, because it is a wet area, we all know that.
Maybe, um, in light of that, maybe the best thing to do would be to hold off, postpone the actual, uh, review of the yield plan. Uh, we'll just sort of hold that number in abeyance for a little bit, until such time as you can come back and get those wetland lines confirmed.
If I may, um, we would really like to have the, the yield plan considered, and I understand the, the request to have, um, the wetland lined confirmed. To be quite honest with you, the developer really and truly does not want to do an OSRD, and I, and I did send a memo to that effect. So, what we were hoping is that the board can see, and obviously, we can't get, we're not looking for you to issue a permit tonight. We don't, won't expect that, we don't expect you to accept a yield plan. But we, what we would really like, and I assume that the people behind you are going to tell you, you know, they hate an OSRD concept plan, they may hate everything, but they're going to tell you one way or another what is preferable, and this board is then going to make a determination based on all the evidence presented, whether or not it prefers the OSRD or conventional. I mean, that's really what we would like to consider, because then, we would, i- i- if, if our, if our client said to us, "Look, I want an OSRD," Mrs. Evangelista, we would immediately go to the Conservation Commission, get everything proved out, to be able to give you good faith and reliance on the, on the, on the plan. But I guess our point is, this is really what we would most likely need to be able to do an OSRD, and we're saying to you, we don't think it's constant with the area, we don't think this really fits in, and that perhaps a conventional subdivision would be preferable. And in either event, we come back to you to seek approvals. We're not looking for approvals tonight, all we're looking for is for the board to give us its impression of what it would like, knowing full well what our client, the, the potential owner of property would like, and potentially what, um, the people here this evening would like.
Even if you have a conventional subdivision, you're gonna need to know where your wetlands are.
We agree with you a hundred percent.
You know, to move it along.
We would like, though, to move it along and, and be able to develop it in accordance with what we're actually going to do. So, we would like to know how we're gonna proceed. I mean, like I said, our, our client would like to proceed with, um, a conventional subdivision, and as Mr. Casili, Mr. Lucatilia said, that is something that we, we are entitled to do under the rules and regulations, but this board has to evaluate it and give us its impressions as well.
Okay, perhaps, perhaps we should hold off on looking at the yield plan, maybe at this point, um, the best thing that we can do is, um, take, uh, begin to look at the preliminary plan, take a look at that. Um, and with respect to that preliminary plan, maybe one of the things that we should do is, um... Ms. Mann, you, you had a letter?
On the yield plan, if I may, Mr. Dammert. Conceptually, and of course, subject to the ANRAD and the delineation of wetlands, but conceptually, I think we could look at the yield plan, which could change depending on where the, the wetlands is. And at least, the developer's gonna know. We're gonna have an idea of the concept of the yield plan. And the public's gonna know the concept of the yield plan.
I, I agree, and, and most circumstances...
Subject to change to...
True.
The delineation of the wetlands.
But let's remember how this bylaw is written. Ultimately, at the end of this whole process, the planning board may say, "We think OSRD is a great idea, we really wish you'd go with that." But the ultimate determinant of that is the applicant, and the applicant could say, "With all due respect, planning boards, we know you like OSRD, but we like preliminary, let's go with preliminary." And what I'm trying to do...
Save the time.
I want to save the time, I want to save the aggravation, I want to save all that effort and money.
No, that's...
I have a great, I, I, you want to let, the preliminary plan is the same exact thing as the yield plan.
That's why I don't think, you've just proved my point. You really haven't done much different.
No, but that, but no, wait a second, you have to understand, what, do you, a yield plan, is that what you believe you can accomplish in the conventional manner? I.e., if your yield plan is different from that which is your preliminary plan, you have a huge issue.
So, you're maximizing, your yield plan is the max...
Exactly.
Maximizing the use of the...
Exactly, and maximizing it, however, pursuant to your rules and regulations, so that, under the yield plan, right, I only show you the lots that I by right can create, because I have a sufficient area, sufficient frontage, sufficient depth, width, and I can place a septic system on it, so that I ensure that when I do it, even though I may include some wetland in it, I provide for sufficient area so that I can have a septic outside that area, because we all know Title V doesn't allow me to. So, that's why, you know, your question was actually pretty apt, you're saying, you know, we, we really kind of want to see both, you see both. And, and as far as you, you, Mrs. Evangelista, I, I understand, and we agree, and we do want to come back, but again, coming back to Mr. Lucatilia, it's, it's like we're trying to have some conservation of your time as well, because I recognize that you don't really want to see me twenty times to get to the same place that you can get to without seeing me twenty times, and I understand.
The important thing at this point is, we have a room full of people standing back there.
Yep, I understand.
And if the ultimate end of this will be that the applicant is looking for a preliminary plan, I think that we might as well just get right to that preliminary plan.
There it is.
I think they call that cut to the chase.
Good way to put it. Howard, can we see the preliminary plan?
Well, that, that's...
It really is, it is.
Well, can I, can I just go over, Jill?
Please.
If I can call you that?
You may.
Um, I want to know just exactly, one, two, three, four, why you don't want to do the OSRD.
Perhaps you could read the letter, maybe we could read the re, letter into the record? The letter that you sent? Do we have that?
Yep.
I know I have to see it somewhere.
I read it too, but I want to know...
Let's read it into the record.
From the civil engineer.
Oh, you...
I'd like to hear it from Will.
I thought...
Can I have the description? If you were marking that in quarters, exhibit.
It would be the memo from Man in Man dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen.
Three, twenty-eight, thirteen, how many pages? I, I get it right.
It's really just one, right, Howard? I mean, I attach, I think everything, end up getting attached to it, but...
Excuse me, one second, we have a question. Yes, I'm sorry. What's your name, I'm sorry? Hi, Karen.
Hi. So, the way, we kind of understand this whole process.
Go ahead.
The way I understand so far is that this, um, OSRD, which has all single-family homes, that plan is created...
It's condos, it's no single-family homes.
It's, the, the OSRD concept plan showed triplexes and duplexes.
These are duplexes, the ones that just have, the one that's up right now?
No.
No, that is not it.
All right, that's what I'm saying, that plan, which on my paper says OSRD on it at the bottom,
Right.
is being used to compute the amount of actual buildable space.
Does it say yield plan?
Yeah. Yeah, OSRD, yield plan.
Ah, the yield plan.
All right, so that's being used to compute the amount of space that is then being made available. Sixty percent of that, no? And then you're gonna build this other plan on sixty percent of that?
What the yield plan does, the yield plan, okay, it's all right, it's, it's not quick and easy, believe me, it's, it's not simple. The yield plan determines how many standard regulation-sized lots can be permitted in a regular subdivision
Right.
on the parcel.
But then, how is that information used to, um, then come up with this other plan? Aren't we then taking sixty percent of that?
No, you're not taking sixty percent of that. What you're doing is you're taking the entire area of land,
Yeah.
taking sixty percent of that, and taking that out of development area. You're, the remainder forty percent, you're gonna jam that yield plan number into that forty percent. And what we can do is, we can waive lot lines. Okay? And to make that happen, if the developer chooses to do that. On some lots, it's eminently more financially a good idea, because some lots are just logistically more difficult to develop than others. There's a lot of earthwork that has to be done in some lots, and, and that works on some lots, not all. And the applicant right now is about to read a letter that was sent to us, um, that essentially explains that, um, well, give, give it a read. That they're...
Okay, so the yield plan is not actually under consideration, it was just used for computational purposes to determine the amount of space for this other thing.
The amount of lots.
Pardon me?
The amount of units, the amount of lots that would have been derived.
Okay.
Bearing in mind that we have not, we have...
To create this protection of sixty percent of that space.
Open space, yeah.
Right, how many, how many units you would get under OSRD?
Yeah.
Right, but we have not determined that that yield plan is accurate and that number's right.
That's kind of like...
Yeah, well, we're sort of putting that in abeyance right now, because ultimately, they get to decide if they want to go with a preliminary plan under a definitive subdivision process, or with an OSRD plan that you've heard tonight. They get to decide the one they want to go with.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what is preliminary? Is that the...
Standard subdivision plan.
That's the other guy? All right.
Not this, but, Howard, if you could show the preliminary...
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
No problem, it's tough to understand, believe me, there's a lot to it. I believe this, this is the preliminary subdivision plan. If we didn't have OSRD, this is what they'd have to come in on. Those are fifty-foot-wide roadways, um, a whole host of other things that have to be, uh, exactly done according to the regulations to build a, a subdivision. Would you read that letter for me, please?
Did you, you kept wanting to say something.
I'm sorry, I saw a hand behind you. Is, is there another question, are we not clear, sir?
Kevin Duncan, Forty-Sixth Earl Street, I'd like a follow-up question, very short. Has anybody on the board walked out there the last month or two?
Uh, I, I can tell you, I have not, sir. But we'll be getting to that.
I don't know if they put the cart in front of the horse, but there's already tractor roads out there, and clearings, et cetera, and...
You usually see that kind of thing, one of the things you see on the...
Did that have to get approved by the town?
One of the things you usually see on lands such as this, on private land, right before they're about to develop, uh, they have to do what are called perk tests. They have to determine if the land is perkable, so that they can design where the septic systems can go. And, uh, unless you're within a hundred feet of a wetland, or two hundred feet of a perennial stream, uh, this is still America, you own your land, and you get to do what you want on it. You don't need a permit to go get a perk test.
The preliminary, no.
I'm gonna, unless this is a process question? Is this a process question?
It's about the dates when perking is done, and the validity of that with the Board of Health?
Uh-huh, and this gentleman can answer that question, because he's on the Board of Health. Chris, we have a question about perking?
The, the timeframe of perking and the validity to the Board of Health.
It's my turn.
What are the valid timeframes for perking, which are valid for the Board of Health?
Depending on the weather, it can go anywhere from twelve months a year to eight months a year. And that's depending on the weather, whether there's frost. It's actually the condition...
It says April one to November one on the bylaw.
I beg your pardon?
It says April one through November one for valid perking results.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think if you also look under, under the law, that the Board of Health has the right to extend it if the weather conditions...
Let's see that.
Hey, it, it sounds as though your folks are, seem to be, um, or several people seem to be concerned that the owner of the land is doing things out there on their own land. Is that the question?
No, pertaining to the development, yes.
Is-
Pertaining to the development, that's why they're asking this question.
And bear in mind that they would only need a permit to do certain things.
Didn't get her name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, I'm very sorry, miss.
Mine, Julie Nally, nineteen Lisa Lane.
Get that, oh, get that on the DVD, right? Thank you, Julie.
If the test forums, you wouldn't, you don't need a permit.
We, we didn't do witness perk tests, it was out of season.
You have every right to do your own perk tests and take holes in your own land.
Yeah.
So you haven't gotten an official, official perk test?
No, it's not required yet.
No.
No.
But I can assure you that the Board of Health, those two ladies that work for us downstairs, they know their stuff. Everything comes before us as a board. We had a meeting this morning. And throughout public meetings, anyone is welcome to be there. It will be noticed. And they call the shots. We just interpret the regs and if somebody needs a waiver for anything, we make that decision at the Board of Health. That's a totally separate venue. Those are the hurdles that the developer has to go through. Conservation, planning, Board of Health. Did I miss any other hurdles?
Uh, potentially ZPA, but we won't even go into that. Uh, there are a number of areas that, that have to go, be done here. Yes, there are no more questions? Is it a process question?
Uh, it, it's just one question about roads. Isn't there some road stipulation to put in development that you have to have it so many feet wide and the trucks to go up? I, I don't think Searl or White Pine or any of those streets that these trucks would be going fit that, that stipulation. And so I'm concerned about what they plan to do for them.
Yeah. Um, that, that would certainly be a safety issue and something that we'd have to consider. Right now, we're gonna look at the preliminary plan. And under that, when we get to that part portion, when we get to traffic, right now we need to look at the overall plan.
Jill, what's the date of this plan?
Oh, Richie, can I see the date? The one for, um, the preliminary, though. I apologize, I think it's March-
I can't read it, are they all the same?
No, I don't, this one is different, so.
March sixth.
March sixth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay, can we start with, uh-
March sixth, six, yeah.
Do you want me to read the whole thing, or is this part that pertains to the difference?
Why don't, why don't you just read the, uh, you know, make note of the date?
Yeah.
And make note of the fact that you're reading the last paragraph of-
I'm reading from a memo dated-
This is mine. Write exhibit, he did. Thank you.
I'm reading from a memo dated March twenty-eighth from my office to this planning board with regard to the OSRD special permit application process. Um, basically it just says, we're going to be, it's, it's forty-acre development, we're going to be submitting an OSRD plan pursuant to sixteen, um, pardon me, one sixty-five forty-eight. And additionally pursuant to that section, we're going to be submitting and did in fact submit a preliminary plan. I'm gonna just read the last paragraph that details why in fact the, the applicant is saying to this board that it would, it prefers a standard residential subdivision versus an OSRD in this particular instance. Based on the applicant's extensive due diligence on the Georgetown real estate market and evaluation of the development options as reflected on the OSRD plan as filed, in the conventional plan as filed, um, the applicant respectfully suggests to the board that the development of an OSRD on the subject property is economically unsound and will not be consonant with the abutting neighborhoods and therefore will derogate from the intent and purpose of this specific bylaw. Applicant posits to the board that the OSRD's limited private outdoor living space and other site conditions and limitations imposed by the open space requirements of one sixty-five fifty-five, as well as the inclusionary housing requirements of one sixty-five seventy-one, necessitate that the OSRD consists of multifamily styled units with a common yard, common sewer treatment plant, common area fees, and a governing homeowners association. All of these factors result in a dramatic disparity between the selling prices of a conventional home versus a unit in a multifamily structure. Therefore, in order to create economic parity between an OSRD and a conventional subdivision, the applicant would need to increase the number of units and modify the construction materials and style of a home for an OSRD. As shown on the OSRD plan, which would not be harmonious with the homes in abutting neighborhoods, given the incongruence between a multifamily condominium-style development and the adjacent single-family residential neighborhoods, the applicant res- um, suggests that conventional plan shows a far more suitable development option and hereby notifies the board of its preference to develop the property as a conventional subdivision with twenty-six, with up to twenty-six new single-family home sites, which has approximately fifty percent fewer new homes than that which would be required to develop the property as an OSRD.
Just for the record, um, essentially that, to summarize that, the applicant's choice is to go, regardless of how the board feels towards OSRD versus preliminary, the applicant wishes to go with a preliminary plan. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Can you prove it, all of this, these statements? Do you have substantial proof of this?
We, we have market preference and we have a builder preference. Um, and we can show you that the homes we showed in the development and the way we have to create the open space parcel creates the necessity for not having individual lots, which dramatically impacts value, dramatically. And that we can prove that we cannot locate sewer systems, if you will, septics, on each individual home lot, which basically changes the configuration. We just can't do it economically. Um, and I mean, you know, I, 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 I respect the board's opinion and I understand the desire for open space, I, I, I honestly do. And I'm, you know, we respect that and there are areas potentially that will remain obviously open and, and to the, you know, open and preserved because there's wetlands out there. Um, at the same time, not every property is suitable for an open space residential development. They just simply are not. Believe me, if this were suitable and we could put thirty-six units and it was economically viable and we could reduce act costs, it would be, it would be far preferable for us to make, make the added profit. But it is not, it is not a subdivision where increased density provides benefits. And it is simply not consonant with the area. To have homes with that kind of, um, concentration and bringing them all forward to the homes in the other development areas, we are going to, you know, basically create a, a lot of density to people who don't really want density that close to them. You, you will, and it's just not appropriate in this particular area, Mrs. Evangelista, at all.
Well, would you like to explain to us about your preliminary?
Most certainly. So, we have a forty-eight for subdivision. Um, and we worked very hard to be able to create a subdivision with a throughway because we do understand the benefits of having, you know, a through project. Um, as you can see, we have roadway, um, A, and then the extension to Lisa Lane. Um, and the extension to Lisa Lane was that which the, this board created when it developed Lisa Lane and required that that developer maintained that easement area so that in fact that lane, that could be developed. So what we've done is we've created one primary cul-de-sac and then we have the road leading out and exiting over onto Searl Street. Um, the roadway is, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way. Um, you know, we would contemplate doing a minimal amount of pavement or even reducing the right-of-way if the board so chose to do that when we were in definitive discussions and the board wanted to grant those types of waivers. But at this point, we show exactly that which would be required under your bylaw without waiver.
No waiver.
Exactly. That was our, our, our premise, was to create the preliminary without waiver. And that's why we do show you the throughway. We aren't trying to show you anything that would require this board's issue a waiver, but that which would be permitted by right. Um, each of these lots does in fact maintain forty thousand square feet and a hundred fifty feet of frontage. All of the homes, um, as you can see, have their own individual septic, um, areas. While we did not do any witnessed perks, we did go out and we did test the area to see, you know, what's, what's this, what's that? What kind of soils do we have? You know, where's the groundwater? And we, we got an estimate of where we could locate those, um, septics 'cause obviously we want it, we want it.
Yeah, let me just expand on that a little bit.
We did, we did deep hole testing on every lot
so that we know that we have the ability to put a septic system. And we did percolation tests on our own, uh, in various locations. You know, so we have perk tests in each type of soil so we know that we can, we can, um, have a septic system on each lot.
You have good confidence in where you've placed all those primary-
That's correct. They're based on, on actual tests.
May I ask a Board of Health question?
At the Board of Health? When we, when we take comments, so you can't. Right now, we're, let them present.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, understand something. I'm a member of the Board of Health. There are three votes on the Board of Health. I'm only one. And the last thing you want me to do is get any kind of preposterous opinion of this health-wise is that I'd have to recuse myself from Board of Health discussions.
Jill, please continue.
Um, as you can see, we have identified the various areas. You see where all of our wetlands are located and you see that there's that easement running towards the back. That's a mass electric easement. It was sixty feet wide, I was trying to say.
I don't see where the wetlands are located, but anyway.
See, that-
It's not on the ending, it's not on that index plan.
It's not on this one.
It's on the de- the detailed, uh, topographic information that's on the individual sheets.
Oh, this is the flood zone, see, I can't even, okay, so if you tri- flipped, you have this though included in the next set of plans.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're looking at the set that doesn't, the next set does in fact have the wetland plan, the wetland outliers. Um, that, that little thing that looks like, I don't know, it looks like a dinosaur to me, is the flood plain that you had asked for. You see how it has that long neck? That, that's where the, um, actual flood plain is. 'Cause I think you-
Those are the headlines?
Pardon?
Yes.
Yep, that's the master-
I have no idea. They're high tension wise.
Okay.
They, they carry a lot of power. Um, do you want to flip to the next one and see the wetlands so that you can?
Can you put up the other colored map for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Howard, what plan are you going to now?
Hmm?
What plan will you just?
This is the more detailed sheet that, um, that it was about if the wetlands were being shown.
And so this one, um, Mr. Rich actually shows where you have some of the wetland boundaries and it shows the hundred, the seventy-five, and the fifty-foot line. Um, there's only one little corner of wetland in this particular area and that's lot, that's lot five, and it extends into lot four.
I'm sorry.
I just can't see as well. I just show them the wetlands in this corner.
Yeah, they pick up on the next sheet.
And then if you go, sorry, Howard.
Would it be possible to see the wetlands that are associated with the road over at the Searl Street lot?
So, Howard, which plan number is that? That's good, there you go. Yes, there you go. Okay. So basically-
Rotated, so we're looking at the same thing?
I was just gonna ask for that. Did you put it ninety to the left? What's up, what's that?
I'm trying to keep track of exhibits as you talk.
This is Searl Street, right? This is Searl Street, and so-
It's sheet six, anyway.
Where, where, Howard, um, could you just sort of put that at the end on the, on the wetland line?
This is hundred seventy-five fifty wetland delineation.
So you, you're planning on putting a road right in a hundred foot section?
Oh, it's within the buffer zone, yes.
Yes.
Is-
It definitely needs to go to ComComs with that.
Oh, it definitely does, a hundred percent.
Is that right on the, is, is, is your road layout right on the lot line there?
The, the right-of-way, but not the actual, the right-of-way is, yes.
Is, is this a sidewalk here?
Uh, grass plot. Sidewalk's on the other side of the street.
But we lose the grass plot when we get to that corner? It sort of seems to disappear.
That's correct.
That line and that line are the right-of-way and here's the center line of the road. There's the catch base and still delineating the edge of the road.
Will a bridge be necessary there?
No, we're not going in the wetland, we're going through the water.
For a roadway?
There isn't, you can-
I don't think there is.
There is one?
Your boundary is usually your roadway? I, uh-
I thought there was a side setback.
No.
From a roadway?
How many drains are you planning?
Drainage?
Yeah.
Sorry.
How many drains are you planning?
We're planning on, I assume you mean the stormwater management areas? Uh, we've got two on the plan. It, the design isn't completed, I mean, we haven't done a detailed drainage design.
It's preliminary.
Right, but we've got some areas that we think, um, we're gonna need to have them in and, you know, the size and shape of those would ultimately be determined on the final design.
So, there's a lot of information that you're not presenting now because it's just the scope, I understand that, but-
Well, we've shown the information-
For you to make a decision, I don't see it in black and white, you know, to, for you to decide.
That's why we have the definitive plan process.
Not to do the OSRD.
Oh, these are, I, I think the things that are remaining are, are minor enough that we know, um, they're not gonna change the plan. I mean, we've done, um, enough, enough engineering to, to know generally what the project's gonna look like. You know, if it goes in this, in this direction.
It looks like you've done enough for feasibility and financial analysis, anyway.
Exactly, I mean, and we aren't filling wetland.
Hmm?
We're not, so it's not, we're not going through any-
You're gonna strip trees, aren't you?
When you go into an area that's vacant, you remove trees. Everybody's home required it, yeah, I know, but it does.
So when that happens, you're gonna have more water issues.
And that's why we're gonna have, we'll have stormwater and we'll comply and we'll have, we'll, we'll go pursuant to best management practices, the whole bit, most certainly. And it is, you know, we always are attentive to that. You know, it benefits, it benefits the subdivision and those people to whom the homes will be sold.[1573.61]
What size are these homes gonna be?
They'll vary.
How many bedrooms?
Four.
Four. All of them will be four, yeah.
I mean, that's the plan, that's, that's how the rough boxes were shown, but-
How many square?
Somewhere in the twenty-four to three thousand range.
Howard, if, if, if no one has any more questions from the board? Yes, sir?
Incorrect name, Wilkins Way, it is Wilkins Place.
It's actually shown a few different ways.
Is it Wilkins?
Salem, the assessors' office here, it's Wilkins Place. My name is Walter Wilkins, I do know.
Thank you, sir, duly noted.
We're gonna make the change.
Luckily, Wilkins is not spelled.
So it's Wilkins Place?
Howard, there were a number of, naturally, when this preliminary plan came in, the various town departments were notified of it, they had to hand over the preliminary plan. Did you get some comments back?
I received comments back from the majority of the town departments regarding the yield plan and the OSRD. I'm still waiting comments to come back from town departments regarding the preliminary.
Okay.
Preliminary was received April first, I believe, so.
Okay, so they've only, they haven't had the full thirty days, so.
Right. All, all town department comments are public record and they were provided in the planning packet as well, so.
Okay, and that, but they were primarily for the OSRD.
And con, and yield plan.
We will be getting some more for this.
Correct.
As far as this aspect of it, for the preliminary. We'll hear what the other town boards have to say, if anything. Any questions here before I open it up to the public? Spot, all right? Go. Okay. Anything else you'd like to say before we start hammering you with questions?
No, please, that would be fine.
Go for it, what's up?
This castle actually intercepts, can I call it the Green Belt?
The Greenway.
The Greenway.
The recreational Greenway.
The recreational Greenway. Have you guys considered maintaining a connection so that Greenway doesn't lose its continuity across Georgetown?
I guess we don't know what, I mean, there's just vacant parcels now, I don't know what the plan is.
Park and Rec has, we can probably show you.
We would consider it, trying to find a way to keep access through there. There is, I think, some opportunity to do that. But it-
Certainly go a long way towards-
Absolutely, I mean, if there's-
The, the give and take of, of-
We just need to see where the, the areas sit, but I don't think that's the issue.
Perhaps we'll look at that a little bit later on.
Should be to the right, to the left.
Oh, there you go. These are town owned parcels right here.
Which one is it, Howard?
The, the, the green right here is town owned.
Okay.
Town owned down here, I believe if you were a little lower over here at the end of the screen there, oh, this land down here is, I mean, the conservation land or the land proposed for what's referred to as the East Main Street recreational facility that this board is reviewing the permit for, I believe, next week. And the Greenway essentially wraps this way. It's difficult to see the parcelism. Sixteen ninety-two E, tax taking was begun on that, got a little delayed, but essentially then it goes this way up here, over to these parcels here, and then heads off to Martel, where the town has access off of Martel, several parcels here. That would be the, but that's the recreational Greenway. And certainly something that you may wish to offer as part of-
It's a, as I believe in a concept developed by Park and Rec, it, it's not a formalized master plan.
In the Conservation Commission.
In the Conservation Commission.
So I, I, I mean, I can't speak for the developer, but I think the developer would consider providing access through. I think we'd have to see what, you know, what, what that would exist of.
You understand, you can't commit to that anymore than we can commit to waivers that we haven't seen.
Right.
Exactly.
Just wanted to bring it up.
Okay.
Please work towards that direction. Any more questions from the board? Any more written comments that came in? Do we have written comments?
I received an email from Christina Morris, Mossy.
And is that an address?
Dated April third.
Have an address?
She lists an address of Five Bussing Way.
Oh, okay. Certainly a, and a butter, right? Okay. And would you read that for the benefit of everyone in the room?
Christina Mossy, Tuesday, April sixteenth, seven thirty-eight PM. "After recently receiving notice that Artisan Development is proposing residential development on the property adjacent to ours at Five Bussing Way, we would like to express our concern over negative impacts to the value, character, integrity of our property based on the current OSRD being proposed. Our concerns regarding the negative impact to our property value include the fact the current plan shows several multifamily condo units backing up and in close proximity, uh, proximity to our property. There does not appear to be much of a buffer area between the location of the condo buildings in our home. I'm sure the condo owners would prefer not to live in a home where they can look directly into their neighbor's home on Bussing Way and vice versa. Negative impacts to the character of our property include disappearance of coveted views into wooded areas and the inevitable disruption to existing wildlife habitats and surrounding wetlands. We feel these resources deserve to be protected and preserved for the natural beauty enjoyment they bring to the entire community, and they would be protected under the, the OSRD. In terms of negative impacts and integrity of our property, we have concerns over the fact that each time we have heavy rain in the area, there's a large stream of water that runs across our property from the adjacent property. A development such as the one being proposed could potentially cause large amounts of water to flow onto our property and cause flooding issues. Additionally, our child's play areas located in close proximity to the stormwater management and sewer treatment areas being proposed in the OSRD, which poses safety issues for us as well." I just want to note that, and Rich, you can confirm this, that it is illegal in the state of Massachusetts to develop property and then exabrogate any type of runoff from your property onto and enjoy any one.
It is.
Yes, you cannot do that.
It'd be very expensive.
Yeah, we wouldn't like to do that.
Lastly, we'd like to express that the entire community will be burdened with additional traffic on roads that do not appear to be built to handle such volumes, i.e. Searl Street, which brings about safety concerns for children playing in the areas impacted, as well as traffic and safety issues for cars accessing the new development. In summary, we hope Planning Board considers the value of protecting our natural resources and keeping our community safe, and in doing so, make Bussing Way, Lisa Lane neighborhood where we all want to continue to live. Thank you, Adam and Christina Mossy, Five Bussing Way.
Would you mark that, please, exhibit eight? Excuse me, seven.
Any little letters, Howard? Emails, letters?
Yeah, that's all the correspondence that I've received.
Great. One more question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course you may.
Rick? On the preliminary plan, adequate green wall, is there an adequate buffer, so neighborhoods, existing neighbors, existing neighborhoods are going to have a visual barrier?
I guess it depends on your definition of adequate, but there would be the, the opportunity for that. I mean, you-
Well, I would venture to say, I'm, I'm not trying to read the young lady's mind, but if she wasn't too happy about looking at the condominium setup, which had all of the development inside the road, she's really not gonna be loving this one. But that's something that, I'm sure her neighbors will express to her and she'll be at the continuance of this now that she knows that this, this is going with preliminary.
I mean, any, any structure, or the structures that we show are further than the, than the-
Side setbacks, back setbacks.
No, they're further than the, the triplex units that, that are shown on the, on the OSRD plan.
The backyard, basically, where she, where the butts is, is almost twice from the OSRD. The density is, is less than half.
And, I, I mean, I don't think that you guys-
Since you like to-
That we get to decide what the, what the distance of the house from the lot line's gonna be, other than it has to mean zoning. But on this, this preliminary plan, though, I mean, the house is a hundred feet from the lot line, which, when you add that to her, her house, which is about fifty feet, it's a hundred and fifty feet, you know, house to house. But there would be an opportunity to, to keep vegetation, I just don't know what that is now, we're just, you know, trying to set the road.
I'm just, I'm trying to read some minds from behind you.
There would be that opportunity, for sure.
Oh, and that email expressed that, that one of the concerns that you have to deal with are the, the people that presently live with an eye shot, not gonna be crazy about looking at it.
It's always a shock whenever someone looks out their backyard and sees absolutely nothing but trees, and then finds out that those trees may be gone someday and they'll be, I'll have a wonderful new neighbor or neighbors. That's always a, an adjustment period there. Any more questions? And given the board?
What is that circle there in that lot? Is that a vertical pool?
That's Lisa Lane?
Yeah.
That's, that's presently, it's a cul-de-sac.
What's that lot number?
Right.
That's the form of-
Over here?
Oh, this-
Yeah, right from where you were, down, that, no.
You talking about this one?
Yeah.
That's a swimming pool.
It's an existing swimming pool?
Yes.
Because, you know, that's a, that house lot is currently-
It is a pool.
So you put that on the plan, but drains and other things, I don't see.
In his defense, he's already said it doesn't have his drainage plan done.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have him say we don't, we haven't done our drainage-
Sure.
Than have Casp-.
Well, we do have, I mean, we have catch basins and, and drain manholes and drains that show the general location, and we show the area for stormwater management. So we have done a substantial amount of consideration for drainage, so it's not like we ignored it. The drains are on the plan. It's just, we haven't done a, we haven't done a, a detailed drainage study. If you ever see those, you know, it's, it's like a hundred and fifty-page document, and it's not something that you would produce at this stage.
That's also the concept.
Right, not a preliminary. Yeah, well, we're, we're looking at a preliminary plan right now, and that would be in the definitive.
With somebody's pool on it.
Well, under existing condition.
Someone else, it's in a butter's pool. It's not a hall pool.
It's not proposed, it's existing.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up if there are no more questions from the board, I'm gonna open it up and there's no more comments.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna suggest, if, if you wanna have a seat over the side so they can come up and be heard on the microphone?
Oh, of course.
I just wanted to help facilitate it.
Anybody who'd like to be heard, come on up, state your name for the record. Please, please make sure that you're signed in in the back there. As a matter of fact, would someone be kind enough to grab that sign-in sheet and bring it right up to this desk up here for, for, you're wonderful, thank you, sir. You get, you get extra points. We won't let them put the T station in.
Yeah, leave it up there and make sure that, uh-
You ready? Go for it, Jack.
Jack LoCicero, twenty-six Marlborough Road.
Welcome, Jack.
Question one to the board. Do we require linkage in this town from contractors?
Linkage?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You do something for the town, like in Boston, you put up a building someplace, somewhere in Boston, you redo a park.
I think you might see that the Supreme Court of the United States of America said, "That's not allowed."
Still do it.
Boston may do it, but-
Okay, next is-
It's a great way to hold up developers, though, and you can thank the great state of Washington for it. They were requiring schools to be built.
Teddy, Searl Street, are they going to upgrade any part of Searl Street where, where Road A intersects?
One of the disadvantages to having you folks over there is that now we have your responses and, um-
I can stand up. Uh, okay. We weren't anticipating, other than where we disturb the road-
There's no microphone over there.
-tie into, and tie into the utility services, we would definitely have to repave that, that section, but at this point, no, that we're not, not planning on rebuilding.
Searl Street is not really a road. It's a mix and place, it's a, it's a mix and place road, it's, it has no base to it. You understand what a mix and place is?
I do, yeah.
All right. It has no base to it. Uh, with the anticipated traffic, Searl Street is going to go down the chute quite rapidly. It has a lot of frost eaves because of having no base in it. It has no drainage system. Road A looks like it's going downhill towards Searl Street. Are you gonna require your water to flow uphill to your retention basins? Are you gonna tie into the Marlborough Village drainage system?
No, we're not tying into any drainage, off-site drainage system, we would handle it onsite.
Thank you. Any other questions, just?
That's it.
Yeah, they, they do have to handle it all onsite. But one thing that we would probably want is to make sure that, that-
Searl Street is in dire need.
Water service from the end of Lisa Lane, at least I would ask for this. The water service coming from the cul-de-sac at the end of Lisa Lane would be looped underneath and back up to Searl Street, so that, uh-
Do we have enough water in town?
That's-
What color?
We cannot consider that. We are not allowed to consider that. But the loop would help the water, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm insistent upon loops.
Yeah, one thing we agree on.
And hearing it the other place where I sit.
Well, again, it's, it's one of the few things. Please state your name, sir.
My name is Bill Lawless, I live at eighteen Marlborough Road here in Georgetown. I've been here since nineteen seventy-eight. I've seen a lot of changes happen in town, some for the good, some not for the good. Right now, I have grave concerns on what this development is going to do to the character of the town, as well as the character of the abutting neighborhoods. First off, from some of the proposals I've seen tonight, I don't see a whole lot of positive going on for the community, other than maybe increased taxes for the town of Georgetown, which, by the way, is my profession, a taxpayer. So when I look at this, I'm looking, I'm looking at this as being a profit maker for some people in this room, but not for the majority who are here tonight, just a select few. I have a question for the fellow here from the Board of Health, and this is not an opinion. This has to do with the way the bylaws and the rules are written with regards to septic system installation. Correct me if I'm wrong, when a property is perked, not only do you have to perk it to be able to put in a septic system for that facility sized for the number of bedrooms, but you also have to perk it a second time, such that if the first system fails, there is enough room on the property that there is a place to put in a replacement system.
You have to have adequate expansion, absolutely.
Okay. Primary and reserve.
So, having answered that, thank you. My question for our civil engineer over here now is, when you went in there and dug your test holes and you cut up this property, did at any point in time, anyone in your organization or anyone else who may be working with or for you, take that into account, that you are not only going to have to put in a sizable system to support the number of bedrooms, but you're also gonna have to have sufficient space to put a replacement system in? That's a yes or a no answer.
Sir, sir, would you please address me and not address the engineer director?
I'm asking the question to him.
I understand.
All right, would you ask that question of the civil engineer?
I would call attention, although I would recall your attention, though, to multiple showings up here where there are more than one.
I only see one per lot, and the dotted line, I'm presuming is a septic system. I would further presume that the size of those houses for four bedrooms is probably in the order of anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty feet wide by maybe forty, forty-two foot long. Therefore, using the scale that's on there, those dotted boxes are probably in the vicinity of twenty-five by twenty-five to maybe thirty by thirty feet. So if that's the case, I don't see that as being able to support two systems, and that's why I'm asking the question to you, to ask him to answer.
And I will ask that of him.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? That's a great question, but I don't think it has anything to do with what's before us.
Sure it does.
He can create whatever he wants for lots, but if he doesn't meet the Board of Health specs, which he doesn't have to show us right now, he's gonna meet them.
That comes later.
That comes later. He can draw all the pretty pictures he wants about lots here, lots there. If they don't get the appropriate septic design in, it's not gonna be a lot you can do anything but look at.
Be an undevelopable lot.
Okay?
That may well be the case.
And sometimes that happens when, when you show things.
But that hurdle is when they go to the Board of Health.
I understand that.
And each septic design is individually looked at and voted upon, not as a group, every lot.
I understand that, but again, I'd like to hear his answer to that, please.
I understand, and, and I'm hoping you'll be able to give it now.
I'd love to answer. I've designed many septic system in Georgetown and, and, in the Commonwealth, it's required, not only in Georgetown, but in the state of Massachusetts, that you provide a reserve area, and we definitely have accounted for that. If you look at the boxes, they're actually pretty big. They're almost as big in footprint as the house. So, and we've got plenty of area, we're, we definitely consider.
Does that satisfy your questions?
No, it did not. My house is eighty feet long, I had to put in a second septic system, even though the first one was working, because the house increased to five bedrooms. It's got a two-thousand gallon tank on it, two compartment. The leach field to support that is well over forty feet long by about thirty feet wide. I don't see that as happening in here for four bedrooms.
I don't, I don't have to be on the Board of Health to know.
With all due respect, there are, and I can only count, off the top of my head, eleven different types of systems that you're gonna put in.
I understand that.
And the sizes and shapes change, so.
And the soils you put them in change.
I don't know if you know where I live, but I wish I had pictures to show everybody of the septic system I had to put in.
Probably a pressure, probably a pressure dough system.
The, the bottom line of it is, these are individual, right now, what we're looking at is lots, and we're looking at lots that can be created under dimensional requirements. If, if Mr. Williams is designing and showing lots here, that he eventually gets a permit to build, and those aren't perkable lots, then it'll be an undevelopable blank lot. It'll be an undeveloped, it'll just sit there and be a lot that never gets built on. I don't think he's quite that cavalier when he does his designs, but if that's the case, they, the onus is on him.
Okay. Okay.
Essentially, what we look at, the planning board, is roadway. We are creating the frontage for these new lots that need to be dimensionally correct.
Understood. With regards...
Any other concerns?
Excuse me?
Do you have any other concerns?
Absolutely. That's why I'm sitting here. There are other questions I have with regards to the infrastructure, which is, how is the town going to be able to support the number of homes in here? First, if we're looking at a minimum of 26, to I think I counted a maximum of possibly 36 units, that is more than likely going to translate to...
Can we correct that with the record?
Excuse me, I'm speaking now. That translates approximately from 26 to maybe 36 units times two vehicles per unit, which is 52 to maybe 72 vehicles that are being...
Sorry, your math may be a little off here. I, I only interrupt you because now we're in preliminary, we're not in OSRD anymore. That, that bonus on the yield doesn't apply here. I'd, I'd ask what the total amount of, of lots being created.
26.
Run your math from 26, that's the only reason.
That would be 52 vehicles on average for two people per household. That's adding 52 more vehicles to the streets right now, which can't handle the existing traffic. The gentleman prior to me was talking about the disgusting construction on Cyril. Has anyone here taken a look at how bad Tenny Street has become between Cyril and Marlborough Road?
We just opened the hearing tonight.
Okay, well, Marlborough Road has been in terrible straits with regards to the repair of the, the condition of the asphalt ever since the apartment complex went in and the road was put in through the old quadruple X driving. Okay. So, no one in town, meaning no boards, no elected officials, nobody in the town to which I'm paying my taxes to, has done anything with regards to maintaining Marlborough Road, and we're going to add more vehicles to it. Does anyone here remember one of the last, it was probably one of the last hearings I was here, where it was proposed and we had a public meeting, that the traffic direction was going to be changed on Cyril Fieldstone, I'm sorry, Cyril White Pine or Marlborough, that Marlborough was going to become a one-way road coming off of...
Sir, was that before this board?
I'm not sure which one it was.
It was.
Might have been different people sitting here.
Tell me when that was, I'm sorry.
What he means is, the, the people that are sitting here, not the planning board.
No, I, I mean the planning board, because I, I don't understand how the planning board would do such a thing. I, I don't see the authority of the planning board.
That's not the point. The point that I'm discussing is that it was an issue with regards to the town where it was proposed because of the terrible sightline coming down Marlborough Hill to Tenny, that the number of vehicles that were already in place in those neighborhoods were having a problem because you couldn't see when you came down Marlborough to Tenny. So the proposal, in what I said, was a public hearing, was to take Marlborough Road and make it one-way coming up the hill, coming off of Tenny. And that was to exacerbate the condition coming down the hill where you could not see oncoming traffic heading down Tenny towards Route 133.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I'm not following you, but...
Okay. The point is, if the traffic was that bad then, that there was a public hearing to discuss the probability and possibility of reversing the traffic flow in Marlborough for the existing homes, the existing vehicle quantity that was there, because it was deemed to be dangerous intersection of Marlborough to Tenny, we're now gonna add to this?
Sir, I, I, I'm having a little bit of trouble building upon that premise that it was dangerous and there was a hearing that was held.
Because you couldn't...
When you didn't have the details.
Anyone here from Marlborough?
You put up a sign that says dangerous intersection right there.
Okay, that was something the Highway Department or the Board of Selectmen did?
I don't know who put up, but it, there's a sign that says dangerous intersection.
We don't have the authority to do something like that.
It's very dangerous, you can't see the traffic coming from Tenny.
Point taken. Let the record show and let it be noted that there are, there are many traffic concerns, and one of the things that can happen either in preliminary or in definitive is a traffic study to address all of those, so that recommendations can be made, and so that at the end of the process, conditions can be placed upon the permit, which would require certain upgrades be made or certain signage, et cetera, be done.
Inserting the same. Inserting the same.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I can tell you, just looking at this, one of the biggest things is, where are, where are we? Right here, sightline there, and, well, there's other, there's other considerations that have to be made. We have to pull back on this. Remember Cyril Street's a one-way.
I'm all aware of that.
There's, there's a lot of concerns, that, and we're gonna label them, we're gonna put them in the cubbyhole called, uh, traffic concerns, and we're gonna get to them.
Okay, there's other infrastructure concerns. We're gonna have a new neighborhood in here with 26 homes, people are gonna require water. The water pipes in Marlborough Village have been in place for a long, long time. They've ruptured before.
Would you classify Marlborough Village as for...
Marlborough Road?
It's called Marlborough Village.
And it's called Marlborough Village and has been on the...
It's Marlborough Road, way over here, right?
It parallels Cyril.
All these, the second street's a part of Marlborough Village.
So if people are coming out Road A onto Cyril, they're going to head to the left, up your drawing as you have it rotated currently, and they'll be turning right on Fieldstone Line, and then right again on Marlborough Road, and going down to the intersection I was just describing and turning right again, unless they decide to go all the way around Road A, come down Lisa, and come down, and then cross the four-way intersection onto White Pine.
White Pine. I'd punch up in Marlborough.
And guess what? They're back on Marlborough Road again.
I thought of Marlborough.
So either way, all of those vehicles are probably with 99% certainty going to end up coming down Marlborough Road to the intersection that I was trying to describe. Now you know why I was.
I understand.
Is that intersection in your opinion unsafe?
Excuse me?
Is that intersection unsafe?
They have a very large mirror hanging up on the telephone pole, so that you can try and see oncoming traffic. You know what works better than that? There's a greenhouse whose front windows reflect the oncoming traffic, and certainly do a better job at night than that dinky little mirror does up above.
So, for the record...
For the record, it's an unsafe intersection.
There is an unsafe intersection at Marlborough and White Pine.
That's correct.
Marlborough and Tenny.
Marlborough and Tenny.
The bottom of the hill has Marlborough.
I'm talking about White Pine, the intersection of White Pine and Marlborough.
No, White Pine is gonna bring people out onto Marlborough.
To Marlborough.
Then Marlborough is gonna come down the hill to Tenny.
To Tenny.
And that's the dangerous intersection.
So it's Tenny?
And Marlborough.
And Marlborough.
Yes, sir. That's it, that's the one. What about electric and water? I think this gentleman had spoken earlier that other town departments are involved in this, and they're going to look at what the tie-ins and the infrastructure means to this town, such as the aged water system that's in place in Marlborough Village, and the fact that there's already a burst pipe that's sitting right at the intersection of White Pine and Marlborough Road, and has been there during the winter, because of course it's hard to make that kind of repair in the winter. There was a burst pipe in front of my house. There was a power line two summers ago that burnt up right over my driveway. So I have real valid concerns from a burst pipe in front of my house, a power line that burnt up at a coupling over my house, and I'm looking at the age of when all of this was put in place. It goes back to the mid to late 60s, when a lot of the Marlborough Road and surrounding roads were developed. And the piping has been in place since. So now we're gonna take another division, and they're gonna tie into aged water lines. What does that mean to the existing homes in the area should they start to burst, because now you've got more water being passed through these pipes? What about the power lines?
That's something that, that the Water Department is gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, but I'd like it to go on record that I've brought this to the attention of this board, and hopefully boards talk amongst each other, so this information will disseminate perhaps through tribal knowledge, as well as being on the record.
Understood. But bear in mind that one of the things that will most likely be required, that this board will most likely require, will be a loop, so that the water quality at least improves.
It hasn't.
The water quality in Georgetown has gone down the dumper year after year.
I understand that, sir.
I got peanut butter in my whole house dual filtration system.
I understand. I, I don't know if it will be advantageous to anyone other than the people that live on Lisa Lane. Those folks might see an improvement, because we'll, we'll be able to loop it around and bring it back to Cyril. Those folks may see an improvement.
I think what you're gonna see is a drop in water pressure. I think you're gonna see a drop in water pressure. Anyone know if the water tank on top of Long Hill is actually gonna go in?
I guess Water Department would have to tell you that.
Because if that doesn't go in, you're gonna see a drop in water pressure here for the distance it's currently traveling. Thank you for your time.
I just wanna...
Thank you for all your comments. Answer your question. When the departments will be reviewing this, they'll have a lot better understand of, of the need and the demand, and so in their review, they'll make recommendations to the planning board.
You have to know how many units are gonna be in there, how many people per unit, the number of bedrooms, the number of toilets, all of that adds up to your water consumption.
Absolutely.
Irrigation systems, et cetera.
Right. And that will be at either the end of the preliminary or when the definitive plan comes in.
This is a two-step process. Once the preliminary, if the preliminary gets an approval, then they walk away, and then they come back with what's called a definitive. They'll all be notified again in the same way, it'll be another hearing, and it'll be the definitive subdivision process. And that's when we get down into the, the details of things like septic systems, being able to do that, the water tie-ins, traffic studies, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, this is preliminary, it's concept, the idea itself. Yes, sir, please come down. State your name for the record, did you sign it?
Do I have to come down?
Yeah, yeah, come in and sign, I'm...
Can I have a quick question while he's...
Microphone.
While he's walking down?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry.
Questions from the board?
Utilities, underground or underground?
All underground.
All.
Required. I just want, I want everybody to know that, we're not talking about why is over. You look like Lou Manallet, but I've never seen him dressed like that.
Sorry, I was gonna stand in the back of the room, 'cause I came from work.
You're working today, Mr. Manallet?
Yes.
Mr. Manallet, by the way, is the engineer on the Park and Rec project.
I'm, I'm here as Lou Manallet representing 14 Marlborough Road, so just...
You look like the guy.
For the record.
You look like him.
Hi, Mr. Manallet, what's your concern or question?
I, I have a couple of basic questions about kind of the big picture of this area. I kinda know the parcel a little bit, but I've heard some things here tonight that are different than what my perception of the parcel has been. With all due respect to the engineers who probably have done more investigation out there, in the ground investigation, whereas most of my investigations has basically been walking through and familiarizing myself with the area. My perception of the areas is a lot of steep grades, a lot of rock outcrop, and I'm curious how that is, how that was seen from the engineers that reviewed the property and, and kinda laid out this, the plan that's here now, because I guess, to my familiarity, or level of familiarity with the, with the area, this seems to be a little bit more than I thought would be developable. Now, I fully admit that I haven't walked that area specifically for the purposes of laying out what would be a subdivision that looks like this. So I guess I'm curious, because they said they did a lot of test pits or, or perk testing, and I, I was just curious about that.
And essentially, what is the question, sir?
The first question is, is could, could the engineer address the, the topography and the, the rockiness of this area? So...
And how it relates to the roadway?
Yeah, I mean, and the, the reason for this question really is, is to know and understand what will be done to prep this site, to be able to build this area. There's gonna be a lot of rock removal, a lot of fill, a lot of changes in grades. I'm just, I'm just curious of how that works.
Let's toss that over to Mr. Williams.
Sure. You know, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about specific locations, but in general, we've topo'd the whole lot, we've located the wetlands, we've done soil testing, so we have a good idea of what's going on, where you can put septic systems and where you can't. We do anticipate there would be rock removal. Obviously, when you go out there, it is on the, I guess, the northeast part of the property, it's, it's, it's rocky, so, and you can see the rock at the surface, we've topo'd it, located it, so there will be rock removal. But the, the western side of the site, over near Lisa Lane and Bussing, is, the soils are very nice, very gravelly, and we anticipate taking the soil, the elevation down a little bit to be able to use that material elsewhere, but we think we can do what's on the plan.
Does that answer your question?
It does. I have two other questions. The second one has to do with stormwater management. You talked about not bringing anything onto Cyril Street, and obviously, these are paved roads, paved driveways, and you've gotta have a, a typical collection system, catch basin, inlets, drainage system. Where is the outlet for the water, or where is the, where is the detention areas for the water, or the stormwater management areas? And just roughly speaking, what's a, what's the rough footprint of where that water goes in relationship to how much impervious area that you're gonna generate? Do you, do you have any sense for that yet?
Well, we show on the, on the plan, the dark green areas that are colored on that, that, the truck that's up there are stormwater management areas. So there's a very large area to the, to the north part of the site, and a small area to the northeast, out by Cyril, we've got some underground infiltration with an outlet. I mean, we, we can't change the amount of water that leaves the site, goes to the wetlands or goes off onto other property, so our study would have to show that that doesn't happen, and that's what we intend to do. And there's, there's, you know, a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of design that goes into that.
Sure.
We're not at that level, however.
But in general, you...
We have to meet stormwater management, because it's a lot...
In, in general, in generally, you feel that, at least conceptually, that the areas that you show are roughly, in other words, it's, it's not as if magically you're gonna need two or three times the size of those areas for stormwater management, and you just happen to be showing areas that, that where it fits right now. Do, do you have a sense that, that those really are the footprints? In other words, it's not gonna suddenly eliminate some of the houses because you need much more area for stormwater management? That seems to be consistent.
No, I mean, it might be a situation where we have to add some other ponds, but it wouldn't be...
Dramatically different.
It wouldn't be dramatic. I mean, like I said, I haven't done the detailed study, and that's, that's really for the definitive plan.
Right. You really can't, you really can't do that until you have that.
Based on, based on our initial look at, where we think we'd need stormwater management.
So essentially, if you needed more stormwater management for water retention facilities, essentially what would happen is you'd lose lots, to your detriment.
You know, I suppose that's possible, but, you know, we have, we have excess area on lots where we could, we could put it, I mean, they go on lots all the time, they're usually on lots, so...
Lou, did that answer your question?
It did.
Any other questions? At quarter past nine?
I guess the last question is, is in general, the areas that you've got developed, I don't see, I don't see any interior wetlands. Do you feel, I mean, just based upon, again, your, the time that you spend out in the field, do you feel like everything really is to the outside and to the...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Nothing you're really thinking about, maybe, there's, there's nothing in the interior that you're gonna have to fill to, to recreate anything?
No.
Okay. Other questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Lou, Lou, could I ask you something?
Sure.
Lou, would, would you two be able to get together at some point to discuss the Park and Recs recreational facility? Not as the person that lives at 14 Marlborough, but as the guy that's hired by the town to do the job.
Mr. Park and Rec's in the back of the room.
And perhaps, Rick, you could link up with him at some point, he can give you a far better conceptual idea as far as the maps are concerned, that we could have a go.
Happy to look that up.
Just a quick one. The retention basins on this piece of property, once the development is done, are owned by who? The town. I see no right of way on there to get back there to clean out the, the retention basins.
Jack, are you asking who will be the owner and who will maintain the...
Yes.
Any detention facilities for the water retention?
Yes.
We need right of ways. Mr. Williams, so who would be the ultimate owner of the retention and the water facilities?
I think we'd prefer the town to, to be the responsible party, but I've seen, I've seen it both ways, in terms of...
And how, how would that happen if they're in the backyard?
Well, they'd be granted an easy access.
We would do that again.
Could I, could I ask at the onset of this, is this roadway to be a privately owned roadway or to be publicly accepted by the town?
Public road.
So the record shows that the applicant wishes this to be a public road, accepted by the town, not a private road.
You know where I stand on that.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's a distinction between what some people want a private road, some people want a public road. And it's all about what the applicant wants.
Yes, miss, please come up.
Don't let me forget about the 53 Jean's House.
I'm Jacqueline Brocklebank. I live on Searle Street. I've been there for a long time.
Nice to meet you.
My biggest concern, I know there are huge concerns all over the place, but my biggest concern is the children. Searle Street has no sidewalks, it's a narrow road, it's a one-way road on which people are caught driving the wrong way all the time, and I don't know how, we haven't lost children or walkers, of which I am one, already, because traffic that tries to sneak out the wrong way, they go fast to make sure they get it over with quickly. Yeah.
You have to put those old spiky things.
Yes, yes. I tried to stop a truck that was coming the wrong way. He ran straight at me to scare me off, which I did. I screamed, I got the number, called the police. They couldn't do anything, because they didn't catch him, and it was my word against his.
Don't you love it?
So, and that's just one minor incident. My daughters were hit head-on years ago, coming out of our driveway.
If I'm hearing what you're, what you're saying, that you have very, very large concerns about traffic-
Huge concerns.
Huge concerns about traffic safety.
So that's just a little, a little bit of a story.
And primarily, your safety concern focuses on-
The children. Searle Street, Searle Street, because people will be coming in Searle Street from Tenny, they'll go and be Searle Street, then taking a left into Lisa Lane.
Into, onto Lisa?
Yeah. That's what they do.
So you're not concerned about up here?
No.
Where it'll be exiting out?
No, that's the, I'm concerned about the whole thing.
You're concerned about all the traffic?
My, my own-
At the new intersection as well.
Everywhere, everywhere.
As, as well as what may come.
No matter, no matter what part of Searle Street, there'll be people trying to go the wrong way. There'll be people even going the right way and speeding, and there are no sidewalks.
Understood.
Would you be sure to sign in?
Oh, I did.
You did?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please.
Pamela Barabie Slajak. I am 42 Searle Street.
He signed in?
I did, don't worry. My big, yeah, that's me. My big concern is-
Oh, wow.
Definitely the other access point onto Searle Street.
Wow, that's you?
Yeah.
You live right there with them?
Yeah, with the nice big road going-
What's your name, what's again?
Pamela Barabie Slajak.
Nice to meet you, Pamela.
I have major concerns over the road. I get the whole land development part. It's this whole exiting aspect of 10 feet from my driveway with my eight and nine-year-old riding their bike, and having a road 10 feet from my property line, 50 feet wide, and surrounding me three sides by streets. I can't even tell you how much concern I have over that.
And what specifically is your concern? Is it a safety concern?
It's a huge safety concern.
Noise, traffic?
Traffic, noise, yes. That's detrimental. Yeah, property value is huge. Surrounding me by pavement on my entire property is not how I bought my property. I bought my property with a neighbor and a house, never, never assuming that we'd be able to put a road between the two houses, come out right next to my driveway, and affect my quality of life.
And property value?
I, I don't even know how the traffic study could even quantify my concern for the safety of my family, given that I have roads going in all directions.
What a traffic study could do is point out areas of concern where we would be able to maybe mitigate some of it by use of a good sightline, making sure those radii were correct, so you have good sightline, signage, a light, things such as that.
A light? We don't have a Tenny in Marlboro or 133, but we might put one on Searle Street?
It might be what the traffic study says. It's done by outside agencies-
Okay.
They would recommend, if we thought it was ridiculous, we'd say no.
Okay.
It might be a stop sign.
But then you'd have traffic lined up blocking my driveway, so I could never leave as well, so.
Maybe the traffic line would not be the-
Maybe we wouldn't be better.
We all know what happens at the stop signs that we see leaving Marlboro now, that they're, you know, it shouldn't even be there, because it's like a rolling road going out anyway, which I think this is going to end up being as well. Knowing that people know it's a one-way, they're just going to stroll out. And I have a big concern that somebody doesn't look at a sign, goes right out that driveway, and hits my kid.
Understood.
So.
Any suggestions to mitigate that?
Another way for the road to go, somewhere else. Somewhere else safer, and maybe not on Searle Street, so that Searle Street the one-way doesn't become this big issue of it going around Marlboro for all the traffic. Can we go some other direction? You're talking about trying to connect, I guess, the lands to Martel. Is there any way to connect anything else down there?
Costs too much money.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for you. I'm sorry. I don't see-
Isn't there a-
The way, the applicant is proposing to put a road in, because if they don't utilize this exit, Lisa Lane is 1,200, 1,300 feet and beyond the allowable length of road without a major waiver from this board.
But why does the road have to go there?
If they don't have an entrance and an exit-
Right.
Then they would be extending-
I understand that.
I'm suggesting it's somewhere else.
Why can't it go somewhere else?
Well, where does the, you know-
I don't know. I mean, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not privy to know the land here and any information.
Mr. Williams, why can't the road go somewhere else?
Yeah, we've looked at, we're thinking of all the possibilities, and that was the only available location to have the egress, you know, come in Lisa and out, and out that location.
And why isn't there, I guess this is a planning board question, why isn't there any rules, as you got, I heard you say, you can put the road right here, like, there's no laws or rules or anything, or how close you can stick that to somebody's property line? Why is that? How do we change that? So this doesn't happen to somebody else, that they can take somebody else's property and stick a road right through it and-
Hold regulations, hold hearings for changing the subdivision regulations and-
Your attendance here helps us a lot.
Do a setback?
And voice in your concerns.
Well, no, she's asking how does it get changed?
Well, that's how it does.
Coaching question.
It's very important for, for the people that are involved, especially Director Butters, to come forward and let us know, because other than that, we're looking at a plan. We'll get out there and walk, bear land.
Will you do a site walk for all of this?
Right.
Will you do?
Absolutely.
Will a site walk be done?
Absolutely.
And it will be posted, and all members of the public can attend that as well.
But probably or definitely?
We do site walks for- and I-
Probably or definitely?
We definitely do. I do a walk.
Okay. But is it mandatory?
No.
Not mandatory?
No. There's a lot, a lot involved with this development. It takes time, and it takes patience, and we have to absorb it all. And first, right now, it's so critical that everybody that wants to say anything, now's your, your opportunity. You know, if you've got anything that is specific that we can really address, we want to hear it.
Will the same, if, if some of the questions weren't addressed, or aren't addressed, I guess, in the next meeting or the next meeting after that, do the same questions come up and have to be answered?
I lost you. I'm sorry.
Well, you don't-
I mean, there was a lot of information tonight, a lot of questions, a lot of things going on.
Right. We haven't even started our questions.
Yeah, okay.
It's only just begun. Mr. Chairman, if I may, for a piece of land, maybe we should just have a consensus of the board about a site walk, because I know before anything-
You can make a motion right now to hold a site walk. You want to do it?
Absolutely.
Just go for it. So, Mr. Rich moves for a site walk.
Is the public able to attend also?
To be held-
Absolutely.
Well, with permission of the landowner.
I have the permission.
With permission of the landowner, you are. But, you know, you can stand on Searle Street, that's fine with us. And I've always made this thing that, and I'm just like that, if the public's not allowed, I'm not walking in. That sometimes helps. Site walks to be held on when? What are you going for?
A suggestion?
A moment?
Put the site walk-
A moment, please?
How about at a date to be determined, just that we are going to have a site walk?
At a date?
To be determined.
To be determined.
Why can't you determine it now when so many people are-
At a date to be determined is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Oh.
Oh.
Sure, you want to discuss it? It's pretty black and white. Do it now or do it later?
Just to answer the question from the back of the room. The reason why I don't want to take a date right now is because a lot more is going to happen. A lot more issues are going to come up. Let's get the issues out, so we can go and walk the site with the issues in mind, so we can deal with them. That being said, I'm going to shut up.
I don't believe that.
Just to discuss- The other thing is, you want to give a certain amount of time, so that we can have the engineer perhaps lay out the roadway for us, or at least the center line and one of the sidelines, so that when you actually do walk out there, it's a little more informative.
The applicant needs to get approval of the property owner-
Normally-
And then we need to have a duly processed-
Right.
The public notice, so everybody can know well in advance that it just won't happen, that we'll post it on Friday and walk on Saturday.
Mm-hmm. What would you say, Rick?
Normally, this happens as part of the definitive process, because this is a preliminary. The final location of the road and the stormwater management areas would be determined in the definitive. This is still, it's still a concept.
Absolutely.
So-
We could conceptually walk.
We could, although, you know, I think it would be more fruitful to do during the definitive process. And it would also most likely be a-
Or a little later in the preliminary, so that we can familiarize ourselves with it.
Okay.
Yeah, or do it a couple times.
It'd also be a site walk as part of the conservation process.
Maybe we could coordinate those. Maybe we could. So the motion is for a site walk to be held at a time to be determined, seconded by Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Does that leave any, any of your, sir, we, we have this young lady up here, and you're going to have your chance to come up here, so I assure you. We have to sit here all night to get everybody happy, and they, everybody's going to have their hearing.
How about if we get everybody heard? You're never going to get everybody happy.
I think if, on any future meetings, we have the right to ask questions all over again.
Of course, absolutely. This is the continuation of the hearing.
This is a hearing. You're entitled to, to respond to the audience.
I would say one thing, Tim.
Yeah.
The onus now, at this point, is on you, all of you, to listen during the meeting, find out when the continuance is, and then be here. No one's going to send you another letter, okay?
Okay. Thanks. It'll be in the paper?
How about website?
We actually will be sending letters on the definitive and the conservation.
Well, for the definitive, but that, that would presume that your preliminary gets approved. That's pretty presumptuous of you.
You can try.
Hi, Chris LaPlaca. I'm at 9 Rosemary Lane, which is on the west side of the subdivision.
Yeah, it's up there.
Off of Sawmill, Holdingfield.
There's Rosemary Lane on the left.
Yep.
Upside down street.
Did you sign in?
I did.
Good, thank you. What's your concern or question?
My major concern is water. I-
Too much or not enough?
Too much. There, it's very wet back there, and when the last subdivision was built, the Pillsbury Lane subdivision was built, back in that same, like, general area, I guess, we have so much water in our, in our neighborhood now. I have pictures of before, what my neighborhood looked like, and then after. There was, the deforestation due to animal displacement or the water going someplace is incredible. And, you know, you can take a look at these pictures if you want. I don't know if that's, this is the time to do that.
Pass them out. I'd like to see them.
Sure.
Take a look at it if you like.
Can we have those?
You can, I can make copies for you. You can't have this specific set.
Do you have these digitally?
Some do, some not.
We just want to be able to enter them into the record, that's all.
No, I know when they built that subdivision, they didn't mean to ruin my property to make me have flood insurance, which is very expensive, that I cannot get out of, because now there's water. I can see water where I never could see water before. We also have, you know, a very damp basement that we now need to put a system in to handle that, which we never did before. It was a beautiful forest, and now it's just sticks. And I can see from Rosemary all the way to North Street, and it used to be a beautiful forest, and now it's just decimated. It's really a catastrophic deforestation that happened back there. So I have about a foot more water before I think I will lose my property. So I'm very concerned about this whole neighborhood going in. Maybe putting a storm pool is going to address it, but I, I don't believe it. I'm very cynical about it. And so I'm really concerned that I'm going to lose my property.
So you, to summarize, you have concerns about increased water, groundwater table coming up and-
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Water issues as far as water being in the property-
Changes in the way water-
And affecting it.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you want a response from the engineer on that or if you just want to...
There's wildlife displacement.
Right, the wildlife that's back there. There is a lot of wildlife. You know, I think a lot of beavers decided to set up shop further downstream from the last development. And I know you don't plan on things like that happening, but, you know, it certainly has a dramatic impact on our property.
You have a basement. Is there settling in your house?
Not that I am aware of right now.
How long have you lived there?
But we have a pool that we're also concerned about our pool popping up. I mean, the water table's just, it's awful.
How long have you lived there?
Twelve years. And the pictures with the, you see the forest, that's from about eight years ago. And then right after they built that subdivision is when we started to just, I mean, you can hear the cracking sounds whenever there's a breeze and there's another tree down. And you can actually see on the Google Maps photo, you can just see the sticks lying down of all the trees.
Is there a brook back there? I'm wondering how much beaver damage, how much this is related to perhaps a beaver pond?
There's a pond back there. And then there is a stream that goes from my neighborhood across North Street where the snows live over to Brook Meadow. And, yeah, I think there was some, the beavers blocked up that. But they were never there before.
Right, no, I get it. I get it.
Development can have a far-reaching effect. It can reach far...
Sure. So what happens to me if I don't, if I lose my property or if I, like...
I can't answer a hypothetical like that question. Sorry. All I can say is we're going to do our very best to ensure that Mr. Williams' calculations and plans to retain every drop of water that he's required to retain on the property stays on the property. He has to do that by law and we'll do everything we can legally to ensure that his calculations and his are correct and the structures that he builds do function the way they're supposed to.
But I would have a recourse if that didn't, if that wasn't the case.
I'm sure there's always a lawyer. How is your receptic?
It's great. I have a 2,000 gallon tank. It's in the front of my house. It's on the highest part of my property.
Good.
So you don't have to...
Well, thank, you know.
You don't have to pump it like every year.
I'll lose my pool. No, I mean, we do anyway, but...
Yeah.
Any other concerns or questions?
Just water. And I can, I can send, who should I send those photos to?
Send them to me.
Okay. I have your email from...
Right, and that way I can have them in the record.
Hi.
Hello.
Can I interrupt for a second? Those three photographs that you're going to get will be exhibited. Hi, would you like to do something?
I will. I'm Susan Stead and I live on 48 Searl Street. And I just have a couple comments and some concerns. And reading from the Georgetown subdivision regs and kind of referring back to what the developers and engineers commented about saying that this plan here kind of meets the zoning requirements, what they're doing here. But in reading the subdivision regs, it says that when a similar, when a subdivision enters into a street, which is Searl Street here, similar characteristics have to be maintained onto a two-way street. Searl Street does not meet that at all. So right off the bat, isn't that a waiver they would need to go?
Would you do me a favor?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, Susan, right?
Yes.
Would you just tell me where you're getting that from?
It is...
Chapter 365 something.
365, 36.
36.
Yep.
And I just want to follow along. Can I just ask where you got that copy? It's, is it current enough to date?
It was from the website.
Okay.
And it says, "Town of Georgetown, Mass., April 2nd, 2002." I mean, it might have been when I printed it, but, yeah.
It may have been when it was amended, but you got it recently from...
So right off the bat, I guess what I'm saying is it almost seems like in order for them to exit out onto Searl Street, they would need to get a waiver to do so because Searl Street is not a two-way street. It does not have sidewalks. It does not have any of the characteristics of this, I mean, the road that's there, great, grand, and wonderful, and the subdivision. But then you're going to exit onto Searl Street and it's none of those things. So that's my biggest concern.
Did you say 38?
36.
36.
365, 36.
36.
In which letter?
And there's like 17 letters there.
Well, do you want to just take this and you can, I've highlighted the...
We just want to get the citation.
Sure. And so then the other comment to that too also is everybody knows that not only is Searl Street a one-way, but right now it's closed to truck traffic. So we're going to be having a considerable amount of obvious truck traffic during this construction phase. So is that another waiver? And my last kind of comment is, I live, you've got your proposed road coming out, and so if you kind of look over to on that kind of last lot that they're showing. And so, no, it's moved. I'm over, a couple over. So I'm the last lot that they really show. They don't show a house or anything. It's just... He's going the wrong way. So the last lot on the right is me. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Next one, right there. Okay, so would you go back out onto...
Are you in the opposite of Searl Street?
No, I'm right there. I'm the last lot on that plan. Next one over. Next one over. Next one, right over there. There I am. That's where my husband and I live. Okay, so my biggest concern is, and I think this will probably more than likely be addressed at Conservation Commission, my biggest concern is the wetlands. We sit on our deck, we hear peepers, there's a vernal pool back there that drains, there's...
There's a what?
Vernal pool. There's a lot of vernal pools back in that area. There's streams, they run. I mean, I know there's some of this wetlands that are flagged, and I guess, like I said, this is more a Conservation Commission issue, but it's certainly an independent study because I don't think they have anywhere near the amount of wetlands that are actually back there. If you are going to do your sidewalk, I'd love you to do it when we're all back there and it is wet and vernal pools and there's frogs and it's not intermittent streams, they're streams. So that's my biggest concern. Everybody has a right to develop. We all moved into this area. Everybody from Lisa Lane, maybe an original Searl Street person, when all the Lisa people were coming, we had similar concerns. They were addressed as best as they could. We're not trying to tell everybody you can't develop your land, but when you look at this, there's just so many pieces to this. There's safety issues, there's, you know, there's wetlands violations that... I mean, anybody walks back there just knows there's a woods road and everybody's welcome to walk on it. It connects all those three of those properties and we've, I've been walking back there for 20 years, as have most of the people in this room. And so to say that there is, you know, when I look at where they're doing the development and it's omitting so many of the wetlands that I see on a daily basis, I just don't understand why you guys didn't go to the Conservation Commission first because I personally feel, and maybe I'm wrong, you're going to have to really dratically, dramatically change your plan once an independent wetland study's done. That's just...
If I could summarize, it sounds like the Stead has some...
Several concerns.
Several concerns and one of which primarily is the accuracy of the wetland delineation.
I just feel like you put the cart before the horse. Maybe, and Tilly, you said it right off the bat three hours ago.
If I was a developer, I would do what you're saying.
I mean, you know, I, hey, listen.
We just have to go with what they do.
You know, I sold homes to half the people in this room. I mean, you know, I'm a real, look, yeah, I've been to many people on this board. I'm a local real estate agent. I mean, I'm not trying to say you've got to stop all of this, but I'm looking at this and many, you know, we don't want to be selling homes to new people and then everybody's flooding out either. I mean, it's just, this land, this, it's one of the reasons why we were all, we all came here was because of the topography, the wet, enjoying the land. And to think of taking all of that, which we all know is so incredibly dense with wetlands and vegetation and wildlife, and then just saying, oh, oh, it's just a few little, it's not. It's just not. So I'm very anxious to have this go before the Conservation Commission. And on top of that, I just feel like what's going to happen to Searl Street? Right away, that seems like a waiver to me. Am I wrong about that when I read that? Is that a waiver?
I'd have to give it a good read. I don't know which one you're referring to.
You took it, Howard.
36A. Streets should be contiguous.
Yeah, right at the beginning.
In alignment with existing streets as far as possible. Streets within the subdivision shall be projected to connect with existing or proposed streets. All on the adjoining property come up the boundary line if the adjoining property is not above, that talks about when we're extending them. Streets with temporary dead ends laid out to permit future projections shall conform. Street lines should be laid out to intersect as nearly as possible at right angles. Board may require developer to pay for stop or similar traffic signs. Shall be a minimum offset of at least 125 feet for streets. Streets will be oriented to meet the existing streets suitable in the opinion of planning board to the width, condition, and running in both directions.
So there you go. Running in both directions with, I mean, that, I think that's the biggest, I have to be honest, and to tell you guys to help you guys out here, that's the biggest concern of this neighborhood. You know, I don't think anybody, I mean, okay, maybe there are a few people, I don't want to speak for everybody, that's saying you can't do anything back there. I just, that is, when you look at that, that is so unbelievably dense and a road that just, to me, is coming on something that's just, I don't know. I'm just really concerned about the safety for everybody and for everybody's property and I'm really concerned about our natural resources. So thank you.
And just for the record, when it says running in both directions, I believe it means it needs to be an in and an out. And then it goes on to say how the road can be now.
But this, Searl Street's such a unique street. You really can't name one other subdivision to this scope that we have existing in Georgetown that comes onto a one-way narrow street like Searl Street. It doesn't exist, guys. This will be a first on many levels and that, I think, is, you know, everybody's concern. If we had, if it was wide enough and sidewalks, the whole length of Searl Street, I mean, if you go down Searl Street, if you've done it lately, there's total blind spots. And a couple people commented about almost getting hit. On at least once a month, we see somebody, I see somebody coming at me as I'm driving home on the one-way street. That's only going to increase, and there, Searl Street's not even wide enough to, it's, you don't even own enough tunnel length to really widen there.
Very narrow.
So that's my biggest concern with this. I mean, I wish there was some way that you could do something and loop the existing, maybe eight lots and loop it. I don't know. So that you're not coming out into this danger. I don't know. I don't know how anybody else...
Wouldn't you be coming out to Searl Street? And one way over Lisa Lane or another?
I don't know. I don't know.
In from Lisa, out on Lisa?
I don't know. I don't know what makes most sense. I mean, I know they want to develop some land here.
I'm on the corner with Searl and Lisa Lane.
Right, and I understand that. That's why I'm saying, I just think that coming out where you're saying is just, it's just dangerous.
Keep in mind, it's not what I'm saying.
I know that. Thank you.
But thank you. Anybody else have some comments? Please come out. Whoever makes it to the chair first wins.
I win. I just want to make a comment. Bob Farazza, 50 Searl Street.
Hi, Bob.
Hi. I am a neighbor of Susan's. She did sell me my house. I am the North Arrow.
You're the North Arrow? Oh, gotcha.
He's the big N.
I'm the big N. And I just want to make a comment that anybody here, I have a right-of-way on my property. It's the gravel driveway. Everyone is free to come down that gravel driveway, down the right-of-way and check out the property. You can come right through.
Is there gravel?
I have a gravel driveway. It's a right-of-way to that utility line.
Oh, really?
Go ahead.
Can I just show?
Really?
There's a right-of-way that starts right next to, on the lot here, it's the Nemiroff's.
Bill Ingraham came to me two years ago and tried to pitch this to me and I said, no.
Can I just show you where the right-of-way so people will know? Starting here, there's an old woods road on the Nemiroff's property, which is the proposed road here. This red road starts here. It goes all the way up here. That has been 100 foot, for 100 years. Anybody who wants to in this room can walk here freely because that is a, it's just a, it's an old woods road that's open to the public to walk. And anybody who owns those land, myself included, public is welcome to walk around us.
There's a second one further back.
And then there's a second one further back.
Does it go all the way to the power line?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. It goes all the way to the power lines and you feel free to walk down my driveway. You'll see it. It's it's a separate path that peels off my driveway. It's a right-of-way to that utility line.
What's the number of your house?
You said a best electric right-of-way?
50 Searl Street. There's a marker that says 5052 Searl Street. It's a stone wall. It's a gravel driveway. There is a right-of-way. I mean, when I first moved here in 2003, I drive in my driver and there'd be people in it because everybody goes to the woods there. Mr. Calaharis owns the lot that abuts this one.
Right.
Now, and you feel free to check out the vernal pool that is full right now and full of peepers that I look out of my window every night and see it and I hear them.
Great.
So all due respect to the, I hope, licensed registered professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts that the topography is done right and the wetlands is shown properly. Because he only went so far and said, well, I'm not going to show anything outside the property, which ties into a large stream and pool system that runs through Susan Stead's land into mine.
Bear in mind, Hong Kong is a little bit different. You have to show 200 feet outside your property line in Hong Kong. On the planning board, you really don't have to.
A lot of stuff there.
You're first. You won.
It's about time, huh? My gosh, you've been waiting all night, huh?
I have. My name is Julie Nally. I'm at 19 Lisa Lane.
Hi, Julie.
Hi. I concur with all of the concerns that have been raised, the wetlands, the traffic, the negative impact on real estate value. And if you look at my property personally, number 19, I'm on the cul-de-sac of Lisa Lane and I'm impacted on three sides by this proposal. My property line goes to a triangle in the back and the road butts the property line. I don't know what the zoning buffer regulation is there, but that looks like it sits right on the property line. If you look to the front of the property line, it appears that the cul-de-sac is being replaced by a through road. The cul-de-sac currently, because my front right property line comes into the neighbor's driveway, number 18, who sold off the easement for this subdivision, I have 160 feet of frontage on that cul-de-sac. With this change in the road configuration, I'll only have 90 feet, which is a waiver. I am also...
Time out, time out, please. That's very important.
Yeah.
Are you saying, this is your lot right here?
Yes, sir.
And this, you gain your frontage from this radius.
Correct.
And what you're saying is somehow because this lot, which used this as their frontage...
Correct.
Is losing this, that you're losing frontage on it.
Well, if the road...
Cul-de-sac's not moving.
I don't know that. I have heard that it is, so I don't know.
Cul-de-sac can not...
The drawing, the draw...
They don't own, nobody owns, the town owns the cul-de-sac.
So the road will go through the cul-de-sac, so the cul-de-sac will remain.
Is all this, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, what this plan is showing is the flow, that this is what they expect to gain their access and ingress. This is going to stay there.
Yeah, if I could speak to that.
Yes, well, why don't we, why don't we let the engineer address that?
That circle does provide frontage for your lot and we could not change that. What could change, and it would be the preference of the board, who I'm sure would take into account the preference of the neighbors, if that road was going through, the construction in the circle could change where you could get rid of the pavement in the circle and then pull the driveways to to pavement that's within that circle, but that layout could not change. So your frontage could not change.
Rick, if that was done, would you have adequate frontage for both of these lots of this one radius?
No, I'm saying, you could only change the construction within the layout. You can't, you could not get rid of the layout.
The legal boundaries remain the same.
So what you're talking about when you say change the construction within the layout is to make it like some places you'll see that's got a little island, so if you're going into someone, if...
So traffic, a traffic situation.
You could do that. You could leave the circle and just have the road off the circle, or you could make it just 24 or 26-foot wide pavement that goes through there and have the driveways extend out to that. There are some options there. And it would have to be discussed, the board would have to make that decision.
I bet we're going to see you at those hearings, Tom. I bet you're going to be...
Absolutely smart guy.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. This is just, these are the concerns, these are why we have to present ourselves, and these are why I'm talking about the checks and balances and how we stay informed as very, you know, involved abutters with this whole process. Where do we...
Could I just answer your other, your other concern about the, about the existing frontage there?
Sure.
Your frontage does go onto that driveway, like you said.
It does, yeah.
But where, our layout is not going that far. It's not going LTR.
I'm sorry, excuse me? You're using part of her frontage? You've got to clarify that one for me.
Her frontage currently goes onto the driveway of that existing lot. There's a little triangle that comes down.
Could you zoom in on that for me, Howard, please? I'm having a little bit of trouble conceptualizing that.
You're probably better off going to sheet... Sheet two. Now, the one before that. So if you zoom up on the cul-de-sac, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about. So if you move your hand up just a little bit there, that's, that's the driveway for number 18. Goes across the, there's a little, there's a corner that their driveway goes across both...
Can we flip this around so that we're following it the same way as the other one? Thank you. So...
Can I steal your cursor there for a second, Howard?
This is your.
So, I'm gonna...
That's, yes, so the radius goes...
That's yours.
Yes.
And, okay. This is your frontage.
So that's road. That is my frontage.
Oh, so if you, oh.
Touchy, isn't it? You thought he was just, yeah, see? It's touchy.
So right where my hand is, is the lot corner. And you'll see that the driveway for 18 goes up and over that. And there's a little piece of that 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 very slim triangle for Ms. Nally's lot is into the driveway. However, we, our roadway layout does not go onto your property. So it would stay, it would stay to the bottom of the page here.
But on the back side and the front side, you're right on my property lines, right on, right there. You're, the road butts that little corner where my, where that bullet is. That's the property line. If you put a stake right there, that's where your edge of your road is, same with the back.
That's a sidewalk. That's the edge of the curb right here.
That's where the right-of-way is.
This is just the right-of-way line.
So my question, I guess, to the board is what are the regulations regarding buffer zones for this type of situation?
A buffer zone between lots?
A buffer zone encroaching on existing lot. A road can come right up to the property line.
This is something that we have to deal with over in the Searl Street property as well.
A road can come right up to the backside of a property line. So it's at the backside, on the front side.
The right-of-way.
It can. I mean, if you think about it, every corner lot abuts directly a street. There's no way to really, that's your boundary if you're...
I don't know anything that prevents it.
So I guess my...
There is no setback for a roadway, to my knowledge.
Well, I mean, there is. You have front, side, rear setbacks and homes have to comply with that, so...
But not for a roadway?
Not for a roadway.
But a roadway doesn't.
We don't adjust any of those physical boundaries, so they have to maintain their structure within their boundary. Now, people are free to do what they will with their property and they can, in fact, create rights of way on a, on a, on a lot line.
So I'm, I've got a lot, a road on both lot lines, front and back.
So that curve was initiated because of the wetland, right?
Yeah, that, can you pull down and look at the back road again? Because you'll see why that's, yeah. Can that road be bumped out? Again, I, I'm looking.
Well, the regulations require a minimum center line radius. So we have that there now. If we were going to bump it, when you say, oh, you're talking about towards the front.
I mean, well, actually, I was just referring to the back, the back. So the front, yeah, bump out either way. I mean, I guess I'm just thinking that the boat, this... I mean, I guess I'm just thinking that the boat, this proposal is encroaching on all sides of me, three sides. So, property value, quality of life, twenty year residence.
A little bit, could you pull that down a little bit, Howard?
When you say down, you mean this way?
Down, down, down.
Take it from the top and drag it down?
Let's do the backside, so that was the front.
But that doesn't show that.
Yeah, you're not going to see that portion. See that portion, it's too...
How can they build a...
Maybe from the index?
There you go, yeah, pull it in, right there.
That's a good question, I would like to find out. How can they build on somebody else's subdivision? In a sense, that's a subdivision.
But I, I think, Tilly, the word encroachment is being incorrectly used here. They're not really encroaching, they're just getting real close. Okay, encroachment would mean that it's on your property?
So, it's a budding, directly budding, directly, is, so I'm looking to know what, if any zoning bylaws exist to protect current residents from having roads placed on their property lines.
I've never seen this, so I have to, I have to do research.
Negative property value.
I don't know of any, all, all, I'm sorry, I don't know of any, and Howard doesn't seem to know any either.
I would say... The right of way can go right up against the property line.
The right of way, yeah.
It's with this...
It's a road, though, they're both fifty-foot roads, am I correct in that?
The right of way is fifty feet. And then you have, in the middle of that, twenty-four feet.
Right, so fifty altogether. The right of way is fifty.
What subdivision were you, was your house built on?
My house is at the end of the cul-de-sac on Lisa Lane. We've been there for twenty...
So, it was a Lisa Lane development?
Correct, yes.
No other name?
No, nineteen Lisa Lane, we've been there.
So, we would really have to look at that.
Why?
Because, I...
But, Tilly.
Okay.
When Lisa Lane was put in, there was specifically reserved in the Lisa Lane project, a right of way for future development.
But through, through the cul-de-sac?
Through eighteen, through eighteen.
Future extension of the road. Future extension of the road, that's right here.
I'd like to see that.
It was in the approved plan because the, the regulations say that you should provide for connections on developed land and subject to development.
Yes, please.
I've done some research on this when I first found out about it.
Uh, just so that, we don't have anybody, I know, Jean, we don't have anybody taking minutes. Could you come up to the, up here, please? I'm not trying to cut, no, I'm not bouncing you.
There's another chair.
There's two chairs. We're just doubling up, this is twice as good.
Lisa Lane was approved, I bought my lot in nineteen eighty-three.
What was your address again for it?
Thirty Searl.
Thirty Searl.
At the time, Lisa had been approved, but it wasn't built until I had lived on Searl for probably five or six years. At the time of the original definitive subdivision, and you can follow all this in the registry of deeds, there was a fifty-foot right of way at the end of Lisa Lane for access to the backland. But then the developer was able to get one more perp test and one more lot, and they filed an A and R plan for the whole of Lisa Lane to gain one more lot. All the lot lines was moved, and at that point, the lot at the end of Lisa became an easement to access the backland rather than a separate fifty-foot right of way.
And that's number eighteen.
Fifty-foot wide easement with an easement option.
So, it's not the same. A fifty-foot easement to the backland is not the same as a fifty-foot right of way. At that time, the fifty-foot right of way was not part of your lot, or the, not your lot.
The next door.
The other, next door of neighbor's lot at all. And when you follow this trail through the plans at the registry of deeds, you can see that. I was on the planning board when the A and R was endorsed, but I couldn't sign it because I was an abutter.
Gotcha.
I don't think the planning board even realized this change from a dedicated, separate fifty-foot wide piece that was its own parcel to an easement on a, on another lot.
Well, then the easement option went until, I believe, two thousand and eleven or something. That was the easement option. And I, I've been following this for a while because it's a considerable sized parcel that is in the greenway. And, yeah, that, that option expired, I believe, last year, but it was wrapped back up for that easement.
Yeah.
It was renewed twice, if I'm correct.
It expires July two thousand and thirteen, is what I understand. And it was renewed until two thousand and sixteen?
Yeah. So, following it, it doesn't look like there's any holes in the chain.
Okay, but there is a difference in the language and the terminology.
Absolutely.
I do have a couple other things, but I'll wait for my neighbors here when you're done.
No, I, I mean, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, you, you finish.
I mean, you know what my concerns are.
It sure sounds like it, yeah. I suspect you're going to have more as it progresses.
Been there twenty years, enjoyed the use. I agree with all of the previous issues and concerns, the wetlands, we hear the peepers, we're out there, it is very wet. We're walking in that area a lot. Conservation Commission must be involved as soon as possible. I, I think this is really, you know, a little bit preliminary. It's taken a lot of time and energy, and I think that unfortunately, we really need to, to follow this process very carefully because it's a huge impact to our neighborhood and our quality of life and all the other concerns that have been raised. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure this isn't the, the last time you'll be at this.
No, I'm sure it isn't.
Jean, did, did you have a couple other points you wanted to make?
I, I do. I work for a planning board in a North Shore community. I'm very familiar with OSRD. I've been to workshops and seminars and I understand the concept. I've seen some that I think are right for the neighborhood in the area and some that I think are not. In this particular case, I don't think that this is. I think the density in an OSRD, something like this, is way too great for something this far into the woods. I agree with every comment on Searl Street, I don't have to repeat that, but I will say that as you're driving or walking down Searl, there's a curve about when you hit Wilkins', and then there's a vertical curve going down in front of the Nemraff's house where the street would be coming out. There's a real lack of sight distance as far as seeing cars coming out from there when you're coming down Searl, and I cannot imagine the amount of cars coming out onto that location. I do think that the, if something is going to happen, I do think the definitive is a better plan. But I don't know where the planning board is going with this special permit. How, how far do you take this special permit? Because I know you have statutory requirements. I know they're coming back with more, I hope delineation and approval of the wetlands. But at what point does the board say, okay, we don't think you need to proceed with an RSVD, OSRD, we're sold on your conventional subdivision?
Well, at some point, what we do is we close the hearing.
Okay.
Once we close that hearing, prior to that, because it's already been done, the applicant tells us.
Okay. If, if I had a choice, and maybe you want to poll everybody here, if I had a choice between the OSRD and the density and the condos, the additional density, I would choose the definitive subdivision plan. However, I'm not saying that I approve of it. I think there are so many issues with Searl and access, overburdening of this entire neighborhood. It's been, it was overburdened by Lisa and by busing. It's been overburdened by many new houses on it. Nineteen eighty-three, my house was a new house, but there have been many, many built since then. And it's, I really think there has to be an end sometime or some type of mitigation. Going back to the yield plan and the OSRD, an inclusionary, I don't understand the applicant's proposal for the inclusionaries. I'm not going to go into the calc's tonight, but I wish that you would look at it. They're looking at twenty-six basic units and then four affordable. In my opinion, that affordable has to come out of the twenty-six, but they're adding that twen, that four to the twenty-six and then calculating two more for each four. So, that's ending up, by my count, thirty-eight instead of thirty-four. You, you need to realize that's significant.
Well, I think one of the things that we, we need to look at is the fact that it's already been explained to us by the applicant that they have real, no, no real desire to pursue the OSRD.
I know, but it seems to me you're the final decider.
No, that is incorrect, I'm sorry.
So, I'm saying, please listen to the public.
No, we don't, we don't decide. We recommend, we tell them what the board feels is the best way to proceed.
All right, so I'm saying, when do you do that? Do you go through the entire process? Do you go through all the conditions?
You know that, were you here when they read their memo that they've already decided?
I have the memo right here, I got it from Howard.
They're not going OSID?
I, I understand that.
They decide that.
So, that's what I'm saying, why are you going, why are you going through this process?
Well, we're going through this process now because, right now, we're discussing preliminary because...
All right, why are you going through the OSRD process? You could close the hearing for OSRD tonight and take a vote not to pursue that, write your decision, and then you'd be at the preliminary phase, at least then I would have the insurance, there wouldn't be thirty-eight units.
We wouldn't, because a, at this point, what's happened is we bifuricated these.
There's no guarantee, Jean, that there's going to be thirty-eight at the OSRD, nor is there going to be twenty-six over there. There's absolute, they haven't been to the Concom yet.
Okay.
So, you know what the area is like, so it's going to be a lot of magic, I think, to get those numbers.
Can, can I say one thing?
Can I just ask you just a...
Can I just say one thing? Because it sounds to me like you have a concern, and maybe I'm getting it wrong, but I hope I'm, I hope I'm characterizing correctly. You may have a concern that other people in this room share. That concern is one where the OSRD with the greater density, the thirty units that was shown, may still be on the table, and you're concerned that if you had a preference, you'd go with the standard subdivision that just has twenty-six homes or less. But I can assure you that I've looked into their eyes and they're not going to change their mind. They want the standard subdivision. They are the ones, under the bylaw, that decide which plan goes forward. This board doesn't decide it. We can recommend, we can say please, but in the end, they've already made their decision.
Okay, all I can tell you...
OSRD is dead at this point.
All I can tell you with a lot of experience with planning boards is that people can change their minds. People can even have a plan filed that they do not even say they want, and then they sell the subdivision and somebody else will pick it right up and do it. So, I'm very apprehensive, very cautious about how the board handles this because I don't quite get how far you're going to take this and whether you're going to gloss over some kind of an OSPD...
OSRD.
OSRD, I'm sorry, we're working, it's OSPD. Go take that to some extent where you've kind of glossed over conditions and details, because you think they're not going to do it, but then they decide to do it.
Well, as it stands now, a special permit, you, as you probably know, ninety days after you open it, you have to come up with a decision, and if he doesn't want to continue it beyond that...
Yeah, but you can extend it, you can extend it till everybody here is really tired and doesn't come anymore. I've seen that many, many times.
Oh, absolutely, this board doesn't operate.
We don't, we don't.
I'm, I'm not saying that you operate like that, I'm saying that's the way it goes sometimes.
Sure does.
Do you send a preliminary out for technical review, or is that something you do in the definitive?
That's something the board will decide to do.
Okay.
At this point, we haven't even established a fifty-three G account. That should be your cue, guys. Motion for what?
Yeah, get your checkbook? Guys, see you standing back there.
Okay.
I do have to tell you, yes, yes, that's my motion.
Is there anything else, Jean?
Let the record show that Chris is making a motion to establish a fifty-three G account. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tim.
And I know what that is, that's a good move. Um...
And we'll, we'll clarify it for the audience.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero, unanimous. You guys chat.
You want to briefly describe for the audience the fifty-three G account?
Yeah, fifty-three G account is a, it's a sum of money that the applicant puts into a special account, tell about the town. Excuse me, so that when we have consultants review things, a technical consultant, a traffic study, whatever, engineers look at these plans, that at that point, what they do is we, they bill the board and we pay them.
With their money?
With their money.
Important detail.
It's a review account, it's a, it's a review fund account.
So, in parting, I can only echo and repeat the condition of Searl, the density of this, the impact it's going to have on the road, on the neighborhood, not just our quiet enjoyment of life, but the safety aspects of it, the, the condition of the roads exiting on Tenny and even one thirty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Arlene Cronin. I live at twenty-three Searl Street. I'm right on the corner of Searl, White Pine, and Lisa Lane's right across from me. So, no matter whether trucks come up Searl when they're not supposed to, or they come down White Pine, they still have to come down to get into it and go by my house. My concern is, even though the road comes through and comes out to Searl, where it comes out, it's one-way and woodland is beyond there. So, traffic can go out that way, it cannot come in that way. So, that means all traffic going in is going to go by our, my house. It's a place where there's a bus stop every morning, in the afternoon, there's tons of kids right there, and you're going to have all this heavy traffic going through. It's a real dangerous thing that you really need to consider, to have that much traffic coming in. If you're going to build this, it's going to take a good five or six years to build it. You're going to have all this heavy traffic and all these children in the area. It's a serious concern.
How would you suggest this board act to mitigate that?
I think that you need to have the road not come into this area at all. I think it should go directly from one thirty-three into this area. I just don't think our area can handle it.
How, how would that be done?
I don't know. That's something that I would assume, I don't know who owns property. All I know is that our area, to try and handle that traffic, there won't be any roads left. I'm afraid of all the kids that are going to get hit, because those trucks, and I can tell you, because I've seen trucks already going down there, doing whatever they're doing, parking, whatever, they fly down those roads. They don't go slow, they fly. And if you don't believe me, you just come and sit in my property for a couple of days and just watch.
It, it sounds to me like you have a great number of traffic concerns.
I do. And it's, it's, it's safety mainly, just because it's a high area of children, huge amount of children in that area.
And your concerns have, have to do with both the ongoing traffic and the construction traffic?
Both, both.
That's it, thank you.
Get into the front. I'm Megan Suzie, I live at twelve Tenny Street. My, my property is right at the start of Searl Street, so I have a unique perspective on Searl Street. I know that a lot of people are talking about the concerns with the traffic. Something I've really wanted to let everyone on the, on the board know and everyone even in the room know is that Searl Street is a one-way, starts right at my house and goes up. Every single day, I see a car come down the wrong way. I know some people have talked about, once a month, they see it, they see it on occasion. My kid, I have three kids, I'm an at-home mom, I do a lot of dishes. My kitchen sink looks right to where Searl Street is supposed to start, and every single day I see minimum one car, truck, delivery truck, septic truck, come flying down. And as they come down, my property curves. And if you are on the very start of the fork that leads you up to Searl Street, that starts my property. If you're there, you can't see anyone in my driveway or anyone beyond. I'm amazed that no one's had a head-on collision right there. It's a very dangerous area, and I want that to be noted. Additionally, because of the way that Searl Street is that fork, and you have to fork off of Tenny if you're coming from one thirty-three, you fork off to the left. The other prob, the other concern is anyone who comes down Tenny Street and has to basically U-turn back to turn onto Searl Street, every, every week, every couple of weeks, I see cars coming down Tenny Street, heading toward one thirty-three, slamming on the brakes, beeping the horn, because people who are trying to turn to get onto Searl Street, it, it's almost a dead stop and then a creepy crawl to get up and to make that turn. The whole area right there can't handle what it has right now. And to put any more traffic on, it, it should, I've spoken to police officers who have been there, you know, doing things with traffic. I've talked to, because in front of my house is actually two ways, because my house is Tenny Street.
Right.
Searl Street doesn't actually start until after my house, although they did move the sign. So, the, the one way doesn't start until the end of my driveway, but I would never drive in front of my house going the other way, because it's just, you're asking for trouble. And I've been told that by officers who are there... And I've been told that by officers who are there. They've told me, "Don't do it, always go the other way." The other thing that I just wanted to echo is that Marlborough Road, when you're taking that right, I didn't realize you could look in the house window. I've since heard this from my neighbors.
Everybody got that?
I, yes.
Always good to watch the planning board, come to planning board, you learn so much.
I creep out, and I hold my breath and go, and I pray that no one is gonna kill me. It's an, all, the, all the roads are awful. Additionally, I'm a runner and a biker, and I invite any of you to come on a road run or a bike ride with me, 'cause I ride all those roads, and the roads are horrible. They all need to be redone. They're all cracking, major ruts in them, major problems, all through every road that you've been talking about. Marlborough Road, Searl Street, White Pine, Tenny, yes, all of it.
Keep in mind, we're the planning board. That, that, that's a, that's a highway department issue as far as maintenance of the roadways. We.
But I just, I just want it to be heard for everyone out there and have it on record. That, that this particular, this whole neighborhood, putting something additionally, the burden on our streets is really, it's, it's, we, it can't be handled.
Characterize it as inc- concerns about increased traffic.
Is there any drains on Searl Street? Any drainage at all?
Yeah, there's one up at the top of the hill.
There's a drain at the top of the hill?
Yeah.
That's a good place for a drain.
Genius, yeah, really.
See, that doesn't get overworked.
It doesn't work. The water flows off of Searl, comes down through two properties behind my house and right onto my land, and it's killing trees.
I saw a hand in back. Is there anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Somebody wanted to come up?
You actually, you actually sort of answered the question, but I guess this sounds like there's a lot of concerns about.
Come on down.
Come on, come on down.
Yeah, Lou, no, I don't think that microphone can hear you back there.
The, my question was going to be, is there, is there some mechanism for people in this area that are concerned to petition the town, to have the town start looking at some of the types of improvements? I mean, on the assumption that, as Mr. Rich said, the applicant probably isn't, I mean, the, the board isn't gonna be able to hold the applicant to completely redesign Searl Street, but, you know. Is, is there, is there a mechanism? I, I know the answer, what I'm, what I'm looking for, because I can't turn and speak to the audience, is there, can you explain to the people in town, because there's a lot of infrastructure improvements that the town needs to have, you know, adequate water storage, improvements for the treatment plant, sewer in the downtown, so maybe some businesses will come in here.
Sure, sidewalks.
You know, Searl Street obviously is a horror show. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things, but it's frustrating, especially for somebody who's in my profession, to only finally hear people in town be concerned about all those things that they should al- always be concerned about, only when this shows up in the neighborhood. And, and, and if those things got addressed long ago, that perhaps this wouldn't be nearly as much of a burden. And, and so it's, it's refreshing to hear that.
Maybe folks see this as an opportunity to address those.
And even if it's not for the applicant to do.
Any other time, they wouldn't be able to.
Is there, is there a way to do that? You said go to the highway department, but, but how?
Go ahead.
As a planning board, is there some guidance that you can give to this group so that they can move forward with something like this?
Well, as a, a citizen of the town, I can tell you that there's a, a methodology called a citizen's petition. And you can get things put on the town warrant.
Just cool if you don't mind waiting six months.
But, but it's better than waiting forever.
It's better than, it's better than waiting forever, but that's the process. A citizen's petition, are you, is it gonna be done next week?
No.
Not a chance.
And, and in addition to the citizen's petition, how does this group get the, the, the leaders in the town to understand not only what their concerns are, but to try to figure out the funding mechanism for doing that?
I wish I had that crystal ball.
I mean, obviously, we did an override to do a school. We do, we, you know, and so, I mean, is there an override in the future to make improvements for infrastructure? I, I just, I don't know what the answer is. I haven't seen that.
It's specifically a political issue.
There you go.
And it's not.
But these people all vote, so now it's not just a political issue, now it's something that.
Well, that's a political, I mean, that's what, a political issue is.
You vote for what you want, so you know that you can get what you want, so.
There is a capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Okay? And the new bylaw is a percentage of the revenue every year is put into this fund.
Okay.
We finally got that far.
Okay.
So what I would suggest is, is find out how much money it is, and request to the capital improvement with the support of your road surveyor, Peter Durkey. You know, you're gonna need a few people involved with this, a selectman, whoever it may be, to, to support it and push it through.
Is there, does?
To sit back, you're not gonna get anything.
Citizens also come through back towards the planning board or work with the town planner and that, given that it's, there's some planning aspect to that?
We have our planner, is he, three days.
Right.
We're, we've got a backlog, as you know.
Yes.
So we really don't have the, the mechanism on our board to do that.
So it's still the capital improvement committee?
Capital improvement committee.
Or the selectmen, and maybe finance committee?
If you wanna take it into your own hands.
I'd like to be involved in it, and a few people have asked me about it, and I wanna make sure it's understood.
With these legitimate concerns, you wanna take it into your own hands, that you're not at the mercy of a board of selectmen. You're at the mercy of your peers.
That's right.
The town. It goes to town meeting. They sit with you. Hopefully, you know, we're all taxpayers, having the sole notoriety of being the single largest taxpayer in the town.
The petition that he's talking about, for an annual town meeting, you only need ten signatures for a citizen's.
Yeah, it's not a big thing.
My biggest concern is, is that there's a mechanism to fund those kinds of things. And obviously, these are, these are the kinds of things that don't happen.
Town meeting is the mechanism. If you get it through town meeting and have, depending on how your warrant article is written, if it gets through town meeting, you put in there the funding mechanism, how it's going to be funded.
I assume the finance committee.
You also have a highway department. You have, you have a highway surveyor.
Chapter ninety monies, I'm sure.
It's chapter ninety money.
Yep.
And there, there's nothing prohibiting anybody or any group from contacting the highway surveyor, asking him to make those improvements. And if he does not have the funding for that, I would certainly think that he would be in a very, very good position to work with the folks here, and with the FinCom and the powers that be to put, to ask for that money from free cash or from whatever funding source he could get it from.
And he's a secretly elected position.
But he has to, it has to be there, and he has to be willing to do it.
Okay. That answers my question.
But it's not outside the realm of possibility that these nice folks will just offer to do stuff like that.
Peter's coming up for reelection this weekend, right?
Yes. He's running on a post. Any more comments?
Tells you who wants the job.
I just more want to go on record. My name's Bill Casey, fifty-one Searl Street.
Hi, Bill.
And, um, hi there. It's been a long night. We've heard a lot of common concerns, and I'll to address, address those, particularly with, with traffic and environmental, particular stormwater runoff, and we've all seen how forests can change when there's too much water in them. I strongly support the board having a peer review done, and I appreciate that you guys voted that tonight. And so we'll continue the process. That was the fifty-three B, fifty-three G.
Fifty-three G account is being established. The money is going to be there for that review process. We didn't vote for the review.
Is that a, something that has to be voted on, or is that an automatic?
Oh, yeah.
That's an irregular, regulations that that be established.
A peer review will be occurring.
I think we're talking about two different things.
We always send all of, our technical review engineer, for every project that I've seen come before this board, it's been sent to him to be reviewed.
When is that review done?
It's a definitive.
Is it definitive?
During the definitive filing. And you, you folks are all, if you are notified before for the preliminary, you're gonna be notified again for the definitive.
And so as part of that process, a, another hard look at the stormwater calculations.
A real hard look.
I would call it dissection.
Very good.
Yeah. Remember, this is like a concept thing. This is.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I don't.
It's a fuzzy image.
Wanna reiterate ten times what's been pressed before. I just wanted to go on record.
The fifty-three G account pays for any subconsultant the board wishes to engage in the review of the project. Traffic, site engineering.
Water.
Uh, water, whatever they deem necessary for them to come to a reasonable conclusion on the development.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to say, or comments, or questions? And bear in mind, you know, tonight is not the end of your chance to do it, if, if you have specific questions. Just things that we may wish to look into.
Good evening. My name's Eric Grizer. I live at four Wilkins Place.
Hi.
I wanna start off by saying I'm a police officer in the city of Everett, and the reason I'm saying that.
I won't hold that against you, I can't remember.
Thank you. The reason I'm saying that is I go to hundreds of motor vehicle accidents, say, yeah. All right? I moved up here four years ago, so I'm probably the newbie to the neighborhood. In the time I've been here, there's four, five curves on Searl Street that are extremely dangerous. All right? There's three intersections, Tenny at one thirty-three, that was recently reconstructed. And for the life of me, can't understand why they didn't put a light there, because when you pull out of there during rush hour, you're running a gauntlet. All right? It's basically the same thing when you're pulling on, out of Marlborough onto Tenny Street. You have a mountain on the side, you can't see anything, you're running another gauntlet. And the Tenny at Searl. Sometimes I forget things at home, and I've seen it done numerous times. People have to make that loop. You can't. It's, it's a sharp corner, so people are banging U-turns, and it's, it's very hard to make that curve. With all that being said, there's no sidewalks on Searl Street. All right, that's been said. The width of the street is extremely small. There's two school bus stops. One is, uh, one is Searl, Lisa, and one at Fieldstall, which is about a hundred yards, probably north, northeast of the proposed road coming onto Searl Street. All right? By tying this project into Searl Street, not only are you putting a burden on the residents, you're putting our kids, which my daughter was here tonight, at risk. Because when they walk down those streets, and I've been guilty of it myself, you come around those corners, they're blind corners, you can't see anything. And one of the women that spoke earlier, Jackie, I almost hit her coming home from work. There's a, a large, large amount of traffic, foot traffic, that goes up and down that street. Also, I'd like to ask a question. On this preliminary plan, that lot that has that L shape, all right?
Lot fifteen?
Yeah. Is there anything to prevent future development off of that lot to tie into another cul-de-sac that'll put more of a strain on Searl Street?
Steep slope, but from what I can see. The wetlands might be up there, might need a wetland crossing, but.
Remember, there's, there's never any guarantee. I mean, anybody with a big enough lot can take that lot, put a road in it.
Yeah, so that would put an additional strain on Searl Street, correct?
Always, always.
I'd, I'd like to take.
People have a right to do it.
I'd like to take that, I'd like the board to take that into account, the risk of our children, the burden to residents. 'Cause I've gone around, and I'm having people sign a petition. Most of the residents feel the same way, that they own the land, they have the right to develop it. Just do it the right way. Find, don't turn Searl Street into a main road, and that's what you're doing. With, with the potential future development, there's gonna be even more burden on that street. I do have some questions for the, for the developer.
Ask him.
Or the engineer.
Ask me.
The removal of the ledge or the rock, would that be by blasting?
Most likely.
Blasting? Most likely.
And what impact would that have to the houses in the vicinity? What if we have damage to our foundations or any?
And what kind of impact would that be?
There's state law, and it's requires that you do pre-blast surveys for anything. I think it's within four hundred feet of blast activity. They go in and survey the house before and, and after. I, and I've never seen, I've never seen an issue with, with, you know, blasting causing damage other than one situation, which was not anything related to this. So, yeah, most likely blasting, but it's done all the time.
I believe you also need a special permit from, a permit from the building inspector in Georgetown, too.
My concern for that is, when I moved into the house, shortly after I moved in, Mr. Wilkins provided me a, a video when my house was being built in nineteen eighty-nine. And it was all ledge over there, and they did an extreme amount of blasting. So if there is any damage, is there anything to cover that damage from the developer?
You have insurance, don't you?
You have to buy insurance.
Oh.
All right. Also, another question I have, and I was trying to raise my hand. The proposed road coming onto Searl Street, are there any other houses in Georgetown, God bless you, that have a road on three sides that weren't built after the roads were there?
One more time.
Basically, what you're doing, that, the house north on Wilkins Way on Searl Street, Pam's house, you're putting a road on, basically you're surrounding the house by three roads. Are there any houses in Georgetown that are in the same situation that weren't, weren't built after the road was already there?
Are there any roads that weren't built after the roads were there?
Any houses built.
Right.
I, I'm not asking if, are there any houses that are surrounded by three roads?
Are you asking if we could prohibit this?
Yes, or basically surround.
We can't.
All right. Is there, but are there any other houses in Georgetown that have that similar situation? Are you, are you setting a precedent by doing this?
No, I, I don't know it, but it's, it's.
We'd have to do a, a survey.
Yeah, you'd have to do a house by a survey.
'Cause now I'm gonna start buying property in Georgetown and looking into the development, because, I mean, that's.
Go for it, it appears as the larger people are.
You know, you say something like that. If you have the proper acreage, you put in a road with the, giving the lots the proper frontage, and you meet the access and egress requirements for a through road, yeah, you could do that.
All right.
If you bought, where you're presently living, if there were a, a way in, like buying your neighbor's lot, that went through to a great big field, if you will, or another big parcel of land, and then finding on the other side of that parcel in another neighborhood, buying another lot, and building a neighborhood in between the two, could you do that? Absolutely.
I, I understand the neighborhood, but can you build a sinker house? And that's basically what you're doing to that person, you're surrounding her by roads.
And what I'm saying.
That's what I'm asking.
What I'm telling you is, can you do it? Yeah, that's just how you do it.
She has frontage. She's not being denied the, the access that she would need to utilize her land.
All right. I, I guess another way to look at it is the planning board couldn't deny this because it creates a housing lot with road on three sides.
Right.
All right, that was my question.
Yeah, I kinda got that. Can we deny it? No.
All right, thank you.
A, a lot of this preliminary plan is, is a by right plan, a lot of it. Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Sullivan. I live at four White Pine Drive. I'm on the corner of White Pine and Marlborough. I agree with everything that's been said tonight from everybody behind me, and my concern is safety issues with traffic. And it was, the comment was made earlier that Lisa, Searl Street has no access to trucks. So the only way into Lisa Lane, there's only one way in for the trucks. And that's to take a left onto Marlborough, and then a left on a White Pine. There would be no other way to get construction vehicles in there.
Yeah. What, what is the prohibition to the trucks?
No trucks.
They overhead wire.
It's low wires.
Interesting.
I think if you guys did.
So it's only one way in.
You wouldn't be.
Um, bear in mind, sir, and if you, if you wanna, please come up, you're free to come up. I, I think what you're referring to is a logistical problem. It sounds to me like they're gonna have to, if they were to get their permit, they'll have to do it with pickup trucks, moving all the earth and everything, or fly them in with a chopper or something. Get a Skorski, drop your equipment in that way. Get a Skorski, drop your equipment in that way, that's their issue. If you have a concern about the hours of operation of that construction, or the path that they would take, we could look at that. We could certainly look at that as part of this.
That is my issue to add to other comments about safety in the road. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
That was it right now, you said there'd be other times.
Yeah, this, this is, yeah, it's ten thirty at night, and we're in, we're looking at vague pictures here. Is there anybody else that has anything relatively new, or that, that you haven't heard yet, that's a concern that bothers anybody, or a question that you want answered? Anybody unclear on how this process works? Because right now, what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna give the applicant two seconds to say something and close. And what we're gonna do here is, we're going to continue this hearing to another night, a date and time certain, that everyone will be able to come again. And I'm seeing two hands up, what do we have? I saw yours first, sir.
I don't know about the procedure about this, but is anywhere that move, meaning to be moved to another location, because we're gonna have a live crowd next time?
I doubt you'll have a larger one. You know what, I'm gonna make a prediction. There'll be less than a half a dozen people when this closes. Because you all are fired up right now, and you're all, ooh, I'm gonna make every. They're gonna wear you down, they're gonna beat you down and wear you down. And they're gonna satisfy you, and you're gonna be busy, and your lives will go on. And that's how it works. Welcome to the machine, sir. Oh, did I? Prove me wrong. Prove me wrong.
I just have one question of procedure, we've talked a little bit about the OSRD.
Yes.
Is that correct?
OSRD.
You made some comments that it's virtually done, you may retracting statement. But that plan is still out on the, in the application.
Those two hearings are running currently.
For the applicant to rescind that OSRD plan?
Sure, without prejudice, he can withdraw it.
No.
I cannot.
He can't, no, he cannot.
You don't think so?
No, I don't interpret the law that way either.
Okay, so that'll stay in.
Two different opinions.
In the application until.
Yep, and then, at some point, this hearing process, which is now OSRD and preliminary, will end. And when it ends, at that point, then, a decision will be made whether to, uh, approve the preliminary plan or not, by the board. And at that point, then, the applicant can walk off, you have about, I don't know, you get about seven months to file a definitive, and if you choose to, you have the right to file a definitive subdivision plan, and, and then, you guys all get a notice. And then, the real hearing starts.
Mister Chairman.
Um, I'm seeing one hand out in the back there.
Just a quick question.
Another one in a minute.
I know, it's getting weird.
Before the next meeting, will you have the walkthrough that we can?
I'm sorry?
Before you have the next meeting, we, can you have the walkthrough first that we can go with you?
That's not up to us.
It sounds to me like we're going to hear some good dates and get some information about whether it's gonna be a public meeting. And we'll, I would anticipate that this is not gonna be very, very quickly done. I would hope that this board gives, um, gives the applicant adequate time to lock that wetland line down. Which they're gonna need to do, if they want to get serious at some point. And, uh, so.
That doesn't mean you might not see one or two of us roaming around up there.
We'd never do that without permission.
You made a motion before that you were gonna do a walkthrough.
Well, we're going to do a walkthrough.
I'm saying, are you going to do the walkthrough before the next meeting?
No.
It doesn't sound like that.
That was my question.
But when you're here at the next meeting, you'll probably hear us do something like that, though. Okay, what?
Oh, should I swallow them? Okay, what? I didn't, I'm gonna take exception to your characterization that they're going to wear you down. There are some developers that have come into this town, that I would not give the time of day to, nor would even listen to them. There are other developers, and some that have proven themselves to listen, that listen to the concerns of the neighbors. This developer, who has done two other projects, or three other projects in town, a couple that were abandoned by other developers. And in such a state, the neighbors were fit to be tied. Those neighbors, when these developers were finished, actually came and thanked both the developer and this member of the planning board for finding them to go in and do it. There are some developers who listen and react, there are others that will listen and give you lip service. It's been this board member's experience, that this particular developer, and I'm very, very careful that I say this about. Or who I say this recommendation, they listen, sit down and talk to them. They're not, to me, they have never been, appeared to be the type that will wear you down to hope you go away. They strike me as the type of people who will listen to you, okay, how do we resolve it so that maybe I'm not happy, maybe you're not happy, but we're both satisfied. That's the way they strike me, so. In between these hearings, there's nothing stopping you from meeting with the developer. Voicing your concerns, and asking, and presenting your resolutions. And asking them what their ideas are. And I strongly recommend it. Again, you might have, you might get the answers you're looking for. There might be viable alternatives. And who knows, you know, a lot of people, especially people like yourselves, think outside the box. Sometimes, construction people are in certain parameters. And they get an idea, and they're like, hmm, that's interesting. I have found that Addison Development, who's applied for this. I've found them historically to be honorable people. They look after not only their projects, but what they're going to affect. I mean, to the point, if I can tell you, that we had a project that they were finishing. And there were certain plans that required trees to be put in certain places. Well, oh gee, the developer put the driveways in different places, so there were trees on the plans that were gonna be in their driveways. He came to us and said, we need to move this, the neighbors are not gonna wanna go for this. So, keep that in mind, there are some you can talk to, and I would recommend you try and talk to these people. And that's just my opinion, yes, ma'am.
Pine Needle?
Pine Needle, yeah, Whispering Pines, it's called Whispering Pines subdivision. And also the conclusion, uh, and the, uh, the completion of what's called Chaplain Hills Road, which is a private way. And, uh, let's, just for the record, just, uh, lest someone thinks I'm, I'm maligning the, uh, the applicant. No, in no way do I mean that you, as applicants, are gonna wear them down. It's the process that wears it down, it's lengthy, it's continuance after continuance. It's closed, it's open again, it's this hearing, it's that hearing, it's all the boards. About a thirty, you might make it through the process and actually come, about a third, I think, I think, but anyway. I'll take a motion, though, to continue.
Motion to continue.
Um, excuse me. Oh, you still want those two seconds? Oh, go ahead, go for it, come on up here. Fifty-two seconds.
With regard to two matters, one with, um, in connection with the OSRD special permit that still remains open, and the next with regard to access and doing the, the sidewalk, as far as doing the sidewalk, I just have to get permission from the landowners. And then, everybody's gonna have to sign a release, and they're gonna have to sign a waiver, and nobody can access the property. There was some conversation about the property being open and being walked on now. I just need to say for the record, anyone entering the property would be doing so as trespass, nobody is being permitted by me, as the representative. I cannot give that approval.
The lawyer made her say that.
For the record, I have to say that, anybody entering does so under trespass, and it, it's a criminal offense, I just can't allow that.
Unless we're on the right of way.
There's no right of way within the body of this particular property.
Okay, but I think he was talking about.
You can't even walk down that, that electric easement, that's, it's just, I just have to tell you that, because it made it sound like there was the right to enter the property, and it really isn't.
Can I just ask, and then, I don't know if it's you or, or, that electric easement? Is, is that?
Is that true?
It's, it's what, I'm sorry?
I just wondered if that was true, and I'm asking the planner.
What?
What she had just said. Because.
She can't lie.
I know, but it just doesn't seem like, if you file an application, that opens the door for us to do that, walk on the land.
We, we open the door for any town person who is actually protected by the insurance. That's why I'm directing it towards the people in the audience. As far as town people, of course, you, you're supposed to give notice, but you may enter, because it's private property. So, people just wanna know, but you absolutely have the right, public does not.
Do we have the black jack?
I have to get permission, then you have to sign away your rights.
Okay, easy now.
You told us that we have the rights to come with you.
No, 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 easy now.
Go unless the public can come with.
I said, I don't enter unless the public is allowed to go.
Well, are you saying you're not gonna enter? Cause she's saying we can't go.
No, she's not. No, 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 no. What Jill has said is that if, on our sidewalk, if you decide to walk with us. She may have you sign a release, saying.
If you break your ankle.
Break your ankle, you're on your own.
And there are some applicants that refuse to allow the public, at all.
Right, that's what.
And when that happens, I don't walk it.
They usually don't get a board to walk it either.
That's all I'm saying.
I just, it's not my, I don't own the land, I have to get the.
Absolutely, you have to get permission from the landowner to do so, is that clear to everyone?
What's the landlord?
Who is it?
The, the landowners are various people.
Three of them.
There are three separate landowners, but.
I'm sorry, one at a time, please, question, what's the question?
We want to know who the landowners are, who the three.
It's all in the record.
It's on the record, it's.
Well, can you just tell us now?
Yeah, I'm sure Howard is looking for. It's, it's actually.
If you would, please.
Bruce Nemiroff and Chris Nemiroff.
Bill Ingram, and I can't remember, okay, and Osborne.
Ingram is.
Ingram is the name of the.
It's a trust.
You asked, that's.
That's the forty acre parcel, it's a trust, it's. Ingram and Penguin, it's all, one big family.
And then, as far as, um, the OSRD hearing, I mean, we, we are not opposed to you closing and issuing your recommendation. I mean, I think if, if this is a concern of the.
I think we, we'd have to discuss that.
I just wanted, cause when they asked about rescission, I can't, I've already applied.
Yeah. We've already bifuricated.
So, that's why I just wanted you to know.
We've already bifuricated.
To have it closed and issue your decision.
I don't doubt that you would.
Because we really, I mean, we're gonna proceed with our preliminary, and we really are not at a point to do that until you close your hearing with regard to the OSRD. Cause what are we, we supposed to prove out what? Are we supposed to prove out the preliminary plan in, in the hopes of then continuing on to, um, a definitive? And that's kind of what guidance we're looking at from you, so before we get that, we can't really continue with everything until we know what our direction is supposed to.
Well, I think the everything is the conservation board, that to me is. It should be, you know, running the same time.
Well, it does, but we, again, with the OSRD, we, we made it pretty bluntly clear.
No, not, only the OSRD, both.
Right, and we have to, oh, with the preliminary, obviously, we have to do it, but I don't, is it typical that people go through and have to file for an NOI when you're in preliminary?
No, it's typical.
It's a common process at all.
What it is, is in the OSRD, we specifically changed that bylaw to allow us to ask for that, wait for that information from another board.
Right, and I think part of that is because people wanna go down that, that route, and we definitely aren't looking for that density bonus.
Impossible to determine yield accurately. For instance, if that wetland is actually over here, then you'd need a wetland crossing?
I understand, but we don't want, okay, no matter what.
We couldn't determine yield from that.
No, but we, but yield, I guess my whole point is, it's, it's, it seems like a, a, kind of like a, a lot of effort and time on your part. That's not necessary, because we're going to elect to come in with preliminary, and we have to do that work, no matter what. So, that's why, I guess my point is, it seems to be, if you will, expeditious on your part, and maybe beneficial to some of the people who don't want us to go the OSRD route, to simply close that part of the hearing and make your recommendation. I'm not saying you have to do it tonight, because I understand you may wanna consider it, but we would prefer it to be closed before we we're not gonna put more effort into this yield plan, is what I'm basically telling you, we're gonna put a lot of effort into the preliminary plan.
You'll be noted.
Thank you very much, and there, it was a little bit longer than two minutes.
Yeah, it was a little more than two seconds.
That was a lawyer's two minutes.
That was a lawyer's, exactly.
I know, you know a lawyer's two minutes, don't you?
I have one final question that I wanted to ask, the easement, that, um, what's it called? Electric easement, who owns the underlying fee?
The landowner.
Ingram owns it.
That, so, that is an easement that the electric company has on the parcel?
Yes.
That's correct.
Understood, thank you. I saw some hands, but you had a chance before to ask it.
Yeah, well, it's another one that just came up. I'd just like to reiterate, the woman's, um.
Come on up, if you have, this is your, this is a final hurrah.
On the OSRD, and I know that, you know, we, we would like to see it closed, too. Because if you don't, and you just gloss over all the procedural thinking, oh, well, they're not gonna do that, and they abandon it, and another builder comes in. Can they pick that up and use it?
If it's not approved?
If they don't, if you don't close it out, if you don't vote to close it out, I don't know how the procedure works, but if it's still there, and you're glossing over it because you know they have no intention of going that route, and it's still there, and then this builder finally is like, there's too much here, they abandon it, happens all the time. If someone, another builder comes in and takes it over, can they pick up that OSRD plan that has been half-assed looked at, excuse me?
They would have to.
Can they, can they do that? I mean, I just, my concern is that you're gonna, you're all acting like, well, you're all acting like you're not gonna consider that man anymore.
Refiled again.
It would have to be refiled again, okay, that's my concern, thank you.
Understood, thank you. Okay, great, uh, motion to continue to a date and time certain.
What's, what's the date?
Six twelve. Six twelve?
June twelfth.
June twelfth, they're gonna give you guys enough time to move forward and start your, uh, your delineation and everything. Move forward with your Anrad and get rolling. You. Yeah, you guys.
Yes, I mean.
I know, it's late.
It's late.
I feel the same way.
No, I'm just not sure why, um, why. Yes, we are, we're gonna continue to move forward, I don't know where we're gonna be, June twelfth, but we should be able to be, have a productive meeting, I think we could have it before then.
Cause our wetlands are already delineated, it's more a matter of.
We, we have.
That was the whole purpose of my.
That's why you said, I mean, I don't, I have to be honest with you, I don't think it's right to have a sidewalk, no, I think it's not, it's not gonna be productive. They're gonna have to, it's gonna have to have, there's going to have to be another sidewalk, because the members of the board are gonna wanna know, really, where we're gonna put our attention.
Where are things going, what, what's it gonna look like? Not that, by the looks of the bellies on all of us. The exercise.
I would love the exercise, too, but I just, I think, I'm sorry, you know, I'm standing behind the pole, and I shouldn't. I just think that it would be more productive to have a sidewalk when we're in a process where we know where everything is. And that's going to mean going before the Conservation Commission, identifying exactly how we're going to maneuver through the buffer. Cause we have to go through a buffer.
Might save you a lot of time to go to the Concom, find out where that is.
We, we.
That way, you can find out.
We're going to, but Mary's.
If that's a crossing.
I'd be shocked.
And the reason I say that is, I remember sitting on this board, when Forty-four Unit Development came in, uh, it was at the end of Stone Row. And they had a beautiful plan, and we went through a good number of hearings. And then, they went to the Concom, and as it turned out, the wetland line changed, they had a, a very good wetland scientist doing it. And, um, all of a sudden, they didn't have an in and an out, they only had an in. And at that point, I think we ended up with a three-lot subdivision from a forty-four.
We recognize that, and we have every intention of doing that, and we had to open this process first.
Absolutely.
So, we, we intend to go, and again, I don't think sidewalk's appropriate at this time, we are gonna go to Concom, we are gonna get an Anrad. I'd be shocked if there's any substantial changes like that, because there aren't any questionable areas in this one, and there were, I know that subdivision, and there were a lot of questionable areas in that. Because it was, wasn't that an intermittent versus a perennial? And that was the issue why the wetland line changed so much, and we don't have those.
No.
I remember that, there was.
No, it was.
I thought it was something large. I remember that, there was, I thought it was something large where it was questionable.
Three crossings, there were a number of crossings.
And we have no crossings, so I just, my, my, my point is, is we plan on going for an Anrad, we're going to get the area delineated, we couldn't. So, as soon as you wanna have the next meeting, we're more than willing, as far as a sidewalk, we would prefer to wait until we have a better plan.
The way I see it, it's, it's, it's your client's money, the longer this thing goes out, it's on their nickel, not ours, we're here every other week.
Oh, we don't want, trust me, we don't want to keep coming back.
Saying that, but if you choose not to go to the Concombe.
Oh, no, we're not.
At this point.
Did he give a check?
Your nickel.
I know, but you know what, and we will, because, yeah, we weren't able to, we couldn't delineate up until like the past week. So, you know, now we can't, believe me, once we had those wetland flags up, what was stopping us, we would've loved to have had the line confirmed.
Sure.
Absolutely loved it.
Great.
Just a quick question, the Conservation Commission, is that open to the public?
Yeah.
Oh, very much so.
Public hearing just like this, you'll get a notice, just like this.
Because we have yellow-spotted salamanders and peepers.
I'm sure they'll be very happy to hear about all those things that you have. Okay, who's making a motion continue? Oh, is, were people talking, or, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Made that motion, I already made that motion.
You made the motion, Chris moves to continue to.
June twelfth.
June.
Is it possible to do it earlier?
Twelfth, no, June twelfth, twenty thirteen, uh, is there a second for that?
Second, sir.
Seconded by Bob.
Wait a minute, I did ask Howard if there was an earliest, we don't know what it is yet.
There isn't.
Five twenty-two, if you're willing to have two public hearings, then.
I'm not, yeah, remember what we had, coming forward, yeah, we have other me, we have other hearings.
We just have, Jill, we have other public hearings, and we don't, we won't piggyback the public hearings.
Okay, uh, motion to continue to June twelfth, two thousand thirteen, at around seven o'clock, at seven o'clock, time certain. Uh, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, unanimous. Okay, folks, so I hope you were paying attention, this has been continued until June twelfth, two thousand thirteen. Not gonna get a notice in the paper on that, you'll have to write that down yourself.
There'll only be six of you here.
See how many, let's see, what, they'll drop like flies, why, they'll drop like flies, happens every time. Yes, Mr. Rich. Um, do we have business?
I was sure.
Howard, is the planning office, is there anything that can't wait? You need signatures?
I don't need signatures.
Take them down, pass it around, that's your word, ah, I love it. Is this a, is this a double trouble, or what is that?
I gotta go, I am tired.
You cross off planning office item number two.
Anything you need done?
Oh, good.
Uh, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Chris.
Second.
I don't know, Harry, I think, I think Jon Stewart's got competition.
Well, he's on now.
It's way better looking than Jon Stewart. Okay, motion by Chris to adjourn, seconded by Bob. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, and have a great.